Good evening, council, staff, members of the public. May I have a mover and seconder to call the meeting to order, please? Councillor Garwin and Deputy Cabrel, that the regular meeting of the council of the township of Springwater of October 15th, 2025, come to order at 6:35 PM. All those in favour, and that has carried. Please join me in the singing of O Canada if you are able. Councillor, are there any discretion or any disclosure of community interest this evening? Not seeing any, may I have a mover and seconder to call the public meeting to order, please? I have councillor Moore and councillor Thompson, that the public meeting held under section 51 of the Planning Act for the draft plan of subdivision SU2025-002 by M. Coutts of Rudy and Associates on behalf of the owners of the subject lands be called to order at 6:37 PM. All those in favour, and that has carried. Welcome to this public meeting of the Township of Springwater Council held under section 51 of the Planning Act to give the public an opportunity to express their views in regards to the proposed application. The first part of this meeting is to present the proposed application. Following the public will be given an opportunity to make oral submissions through Zoom application or in person. Any person wishing to make an oral submission is to have notified the township prior to 8:30 this morning and been added to the commenters list. If a person or public body who files an appeal of decision to the township in respect to the planning application does not make an oral submission at the public meeting or written submission to the Township of Springwater before the proposed amendments are passed, the Ontario Land Tribunal may dismiss all or part of the appeal. All comments and questions should be addressed through the chair. Oral submissions will be included in this meeting's minutes and form part of the public record, including the name and address of the speaker as information collected under the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes of the meeting will be posted at the township website. SU2025-002, 1200 Seddon Road. I will now call upon the clerk to confirm notice of this meeting and to which dates unnoticed was given.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Notice of this public meeting was mailed on the 24th day of September 2025 to the owner of the subject lands and to the assessed owners of 23 properties in the Township of Springwater within 120 metres of the area to which the proposed application would apply and to all persons and public bodies as prescribed under the Planning Act and its regulations. Notice was posted at the assessed property to which the proposed amendment applies at locations visible from Seddon Road, Collins Lane and Byers Street. Notice was also posted on the township's website.
Has the planning department received any correspondence in response to the notice of public meeting?
There have been 14 items of correspondence received for this application. Simcoe County District School Board in a letter received October 6th, 2025. Dave and Jan Crane of Three Timber Wolf Trail in a letter received October 10th, 2025. Hydro One in an email received October 10th, 2025. Steve Van Drik of Remax Hallmake Che Realty Inc. in a letter received October 11th, 2025. Steve Witty of SL Witty Construction Limited in a letter received October 11th, 2025. Deanna and Carmen Allegrante of 36 Glenna Trail in a letter received October 13th, 2025. Adam Scarraty of Scarraty and Ferreri Real Estate Team in a letter received October 14th, 2025. Chris Fumo Lilac Homes of Seven Canata Court in a letter received October 14th, 2025. The Cooper Family in a letter received October 14th, 2025. The Kezak Family in a letter received October 14th, 2025. Tim and Diane Schwed in a letter received October 15th, 2025. Dendor Family of 634 Ridge Road East Oromadonte in a letter received October 15th, 2025. Lisa and Brent Davis of 34 Riley's Run in an email dated October 15th, 2025. And Matt and Erin Schwed of Two Walker James Parkway in an email received October 15th, 2025. All these pieces of correspondence can be found on tonight's agenda and any additional comments sent right prior to the meeting have been forwarded to council and will also form part of the public record.
Thank you. I will now call upon Rudy and Associates to outline the purpose and effect of the subdivision application. Seddon Road. In September of this year, oh, I guess I should wait for my presentation to... So in September of this year, we submitted an application accompanied by several supporting technical reports for a draft plan of subdivision on the lands. And the proposed draft plan of subdivision is the subject of tonight's public meeting under the Planning Act. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. The lands subject to the draft plan of subdivision are approximately 7.8 hectares or about 19 acres in size with approximately 327 metres of frontage along Seddon, along the north side of Seddon Road. They are located in the Snow Valley Settlement area. As you can see on the, the context map, uh, they are surrounded by existing residential developments. To the west, we have the Snow Valley Highlands and to the east is the Cameron Estate subdivision. There's environmental protection lands, abutting lands to the north. The site is well-treed with a single-family detached dwelling located on the easterly portion of the lands. It is the intent to relocate this dwelling to accommodate the proposed development. Uh, next slide, please. The site is designated a settlement in the County of Simcoe official plan. As noted in the county's OP, the settlement designation is to be the focus of population and employment growth. Uh, next slide, please. The lands are designated urban residential in the Township of Springwater official plan on schedule A12 and they represent the remaining undeveloped lands of Development Area 12, which was established by the Snow Valley Secondary Plan. The urban residential designation permits a variety of residential uses, including low-density, single-family detached lots. And next slide, please. The site is currently zoned residential one in the Township of Springwater zoning bylaw. And the existing R1 zone permits single-family detached dwellings with a set of zone provisions specific to the type of services that are available to the lot. The draft plan of subdivision proposed on these lands create single-family detached lots which all meet or exceed the provisions of the existing R1 zone. As such, there's no official plan or zoning bylaw amendment that would be required to accommodate this proposed subdivision. Next slide, please. So in preparation for our draft plan of subdivision submission, we did undergo previous planning applications, so I just will quickly outline that for, for you here this evening. So 1200 Seddon Road originally composed of a total of approximately 18.7 hectares of land and it had both urban residential and environmental protection lands. So to accommodate the proposed residential subdivision, the lands obtained consent approval on July of this year. And this consent approval created two parcels. Severed lands for future residential development, which are the subject of this evening's public meeting, and retained lands to be utilized for one single-family residential dwelling. The single-family residential dwelling on the retained lands from that application will have access to the municipal roadway and municipal services to be constructed for the proposed development on the severed lands. Next slide, please. So just for some further context, the purple area on this slide represents the lands that are currently designated and zoned for residential development. And a portion of the retained lands is currently designated and zoned for residential uses. That's the area, the, the bubble to the west there. That's the area that, um, we will, that will be serviced with a single-family residential dwelling on the portion of the retained lands. Uh, next slide, please. As I'd mentioned, the subject property represents the remaining lands of Development Area number 12 as established through the Snow Valley Secondary Plan. The site is sandwiched between two existing residential subdivisions, Snow Valley Highlands to the west and Cameron Estates to the east. Both of these abutting subdivisions have a municipal roadway block which will accommodate a municipal right-of-way known as Collins Lane that will go through the proposed subdivision. Next slide, please. Thank you. The proposed draft plan is, which we're calling Cameron Estates Phase 3, will create 26 single-family residential lots. They're all sized to complement lots with, within the surrounding Snow Valley area. Access to the lots is proposed through an extension of Collins Lane as well as one additional internal roadway which will terminate in a cul-de-sac. There will be, it's important to note, there will be no access to the lots from Seddon Road. In keeping with the Snow Valley area, a public walking trail is proposed. It's at the north of the property and it's, it will provide a trail linkage to existing trails located throughout adjacent subdivisions. Uh, next slide, please. As common practice and required within the official plan for all developments within the Snow Valley Settlement area, tree preservation areas are proposed along the rear of all of the residential lots within the plan. As done with all other developments in the area, this tree preservation area will be registered on the title of each lot, which maintains their preservation into the future. Next slide, please. ACOM Consulting engineers have prepared servicing strategy for the proposed development. The subdivision will be serviced through an extension of the existing water main that's located at Snow Valley Highlands to the west and Cameron Estates to the east, which will create a looped water system. The site will also be serviced through a municipal sanitary system and will tie into the existing system within the Cameron Estate subdivision to the east. This was constructed to, to accommodate this proposed development. And as typical of developments in the Snow Valley area, the stormwater management strategy will consist of grass roadside ditches, infiltration trenches and rooftop drainage to soak away pits. Any additional quantity controls will be provided through the existing stormwater management pond, which is located within the Cameron Estate subdivision to the east, which again was constructed to accommodate this proposed development. Uh, next slide, please. In support of the proposed draft plan of subdivision and as requested through our pre-consultation process and meeting with the township staff and NVCA, several supporting technical studies have been prepared in support of this draft plan. A geotechnical study and slope stability review, an arborist and tree preservation plan, an environmental impact study, an archaeological assessment, a traffic brief, a functional servicing and stormwater management report, a hydro geological brief, as well as a planning justification report. Uh, next slide, please. So in, in summary, the proposed draft plan of subdivision facilitates residential development on urban residential lands within a well-established settlement area. The draft plan can be efficiently serviced through the extension of an existing municipal roadway and existing water and sewer services. The draft plan will provide residential lots which are sized to complement the area. It provides tree preservation areas on each lot as standard throughout Snow Valley. There is included a public walking trail which will provide an active transportation link to adjacent residential subdivisions, which again is in keeping with the active transportation facilities within the existing community and the draft plan conforms to and is consistent with the current planning policy framework. Lastly, and I think it's important to note, I know there were a lot of letters that were received, that were read out by the clerk this evening. We have received several letters in support from the public for this proposed development, which we feel is a testament to the thoughtful and complimentary design of the subdivision. I don't have anything further to present but available for questions. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I will now call on the moderator to provide the number of people who have registered to ask questions or make comments regarding the application.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coghlan. We have four members of the public who have registered to make an oral submission for this application. If I call your name and you are in attendance and would like to make comments, please make your way to the front podium. Uh, first we have Harry Sahi. Uh, Jenna Weck.
Apologies, I'm monitor. I'm gonna do, I just wanted to double check that the participants aren't online before we, so we don't have anyone online, okay?
Uh, we have Bill Butler.
Come on forward. Kim. Ask that you move as close as you can to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name is Bill Butler. I'm 13 Byers Street, Cameron Estates. Um, I'd like to start off by saying we have no objection to the development. We knew it was coming. They were very forthcoming when we bought the lot that the road was going to be extended through. Um, I just have a couple of concerns. Now, the planner, um, addressed the one about tree preservation and arborist, so it looks like there was a complete application. However, um, one of the main concerns that I would have is safety. These roads are only about seven and a half metres wide. There are no shoulders, no sidewalks, so the children are actively using those streets. Byers Street is a main pickup for the children on the buses. There are three buses that come into Cameron Estates. Construction equipment, including delivery of materials, is going to be a concern for their safety. Also, the safety of the residents who actively walk the roads with their pets. So in reviewing what's, uh, available, I noticed that there are two driveways off of Seddon to the existing development. If there's a tile bed along Seddon, it already crosses those beds. So they can be actively used as the access to the future subdivision for any construction activity. And that way, the, uh, existing residents are protected. We also don't have to put up with the mud and dust because the mud mat for erosion and sediment controls can basically be built on those driveways. Um, and the driveways are fairly wide. So what I'm asking is that, uh, council direct staff to put that as a draft plan condition, that that be the access to the subdivision. The other issue that, uh, we have had is, as you're aware, for above 40 days, I'm not sure the exact extent because the signage that was put up to warn us that there was a water ban were hidden behind weeds and we probably didn't see them early enough. But I think it was about 40 days. If Springwater can't provide drinking water, I understand the permit to take water from the ministry can provide, uh, pump more out of the aquifer. So there's something not correct in the calculations and why there was insufficient water to provide during all that hot weather. Climate change is providing more and more hot weather. So if every year we are told we can't water our grass and all the vegetation that we have planted, uh, we're paying a lot of taxes because we have estate lots. And we want to keep them that way. The, I'm not sure what the engineers have used for their, uh, people per unit, uh, calculations, but there seems to be something that can't be right about the peak flow required to service these lots. We have 100, 110 foot wide lots. So obviously there's something wrong in the calculations, not providing enough safety factor on the water that is required for our use. So I would like that addressed. 26 units is going to take a lot of water out of the system. And if we're already tight, I would like to find out how the township engineers can address these. Now, these are minor issues that a good qualified engineer and planner can address quite easily. So as before the draft plan is approved, maybe we can have these addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and I saw staff taking notes there, so thank you very much. I'll return back to our moderator.
Thank you. Finally, we have Diane Schwed registered. And that is all, Mayor Coghlan.
Thank you. I do have, do, I do see. I see a telephone with no name. At this time, I will turn to see if there are any individuals who are present here tonight who would like to make an oral submission regarding this public meeting. And not seeing any, we'll turn to members of council for any comments or questions. Deputy Cabrel.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. Just one comment, um, with respect to this is that, uh, the new lots are completely in character with, uh, with those in the surrounding area, which is nice to see. Sometimes developers do change their models and I'm very happy to see that this is going to be the preservation of trees, which seems to be very important in that area and it certainly makes it look, uh, most inviting in the summertime.
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, may I have a mover and seconder? Or sorry, thank you for all who participated in the public meeting with respect to the proposed SU2025-002, 1200 Seddon Road application and for showing an interest in the matter. May I have a mover and seconder for adjournment, please? Deputy Cabrel and councillor Thompson, that this public meeting of council held under sections 51 of the Planning Act for SU2025-002, 1200 Seddon Road does now adjourn at 6:57 PM. All those in favour, and that has carried. Councillor, we're now looking for direction following the public meeting. A mover and seconder, please. Councillor Moore and councillor Thompson, that council having held a public meeting in accordance with sections 51 in the Planning Act, RSO 1990 CP 13 as amended for draft plan of subdivision of 2000, sorry, SU2025-002 by M. Coutts of Rudy and Associates on behalf of the owners of the subject lands, having noted correspondence and input received, direct the application be referred back to staff. Any further comments or questions? All those in favour, and that has carried. I will now pull, uh, we're moving on now to our presentations and at this time I would call on the Matheson Creek Campground to present. Welcome. I just asked that you get as close to the microphone as you can there. Thank you.
Mayor and deputy mayor and councillors and audience, thank you for hearing us tonight. I'm not going to take a lot of your time because this is just a tiny smidgen of the business you have to do. Matheson Creek is owned by Communities Connecting for Children. That is a registered Canadian charity. That charity was formed in 2009 to save what used to be Camp Twatno, a girl guide camp on Gilroad, uh, from the sale that girl guides were implementing to other camps across Ontario. The charity wasn't completed on time. It takes a lot, as you know, a lot of time for lawyers to get a corporation up and running. So the camp, uh, sat idle from 2009 till 2021. And finally, it was, we were able, our small charity was able to buy the camp again. Uh, I was the, the instrumental person that found the camp in 1994 on behalf of Girl Guides. And, uh, it was an old logging camp at the time and it went, uh, under power of sale because the subdivider purchased the old logging camp and you good council people refused to let him build a subdivision on that environmentally protected land. So we bought it on behalf of the Girl Guides and built a beautiful camp that's there today. I left you all some brochures to be passed around so you can see how beautiful the camp is and how unique it is. It's the only one that we've ever known of that was built from the ground up. And in order to keep the public, particularly the Girl Guides at the time, interested, we decided to keep building different sites in order to attract them back. So each time they would go, they would get a different experience. So we, we have Wendots on the Wendaki site in Longhouses. We have prairie Indians, the Blackfeet and so on. And teepees on another, we have covered wagons. We have a military site and so on. Um, I was actually here in, in between 1986 and 1990 doing presentations to all the townships around the county and the county and different conservation areas looking for land because at that time we were very rich. We had saved a lot of money in Girl Guides and we were property poor. Here I am today again and we flipped. So we're property rich now and very financially poor. How that came to be was that in order to buy this property in 2021, I mortgaged my home and lent the money to our charity to purchase the property because our charity had no money. Then we found out that there's been a lot of changes in the 12 years that it's sat abandoned. One of the big changes was Walkerton that came along and our beautiful Artesian water and we now had to have a UV system. So we went, we went years working to get the UV system up and operating and we had no power to run it. And so we had to put in a solar, um, system to run the UV system. And one thing after another, uh, the buildings had sat and, uh, in moisture and with rodents and with insects and so on. So to refurbish the camp back, we had no hope of getting it certified when we first had it. And we're only a small charity. We have about 20 members. Born and buried this little charity if you're looking for a place to donate to. And, um, anyway, so finally we got our, our UV system up and all we have is our own selves to raise the money. We have no funding. We haven't got any staff. If I had any time, I would look for grants myself, but I have no time. I work at least 12 hours a day on this camp to keep it going now that it's finally certified. Just recently, we found out that the UV system had a glitch in a controller and they shut down our water. So we're going to have to pay major repairs out again. Uh, we do have a little, um, bi-weekly bingo that we run and we are very strictly reserved what we can spend that money on. It can be spent on repairs at the camp and things like porta-potties, but we can't spend it on administrative things. So as I said before, um, we have only $600 in our general account and our, I think our fee for this, uh, and we passed our, we passed our inspection, by the way. Your township people came, we passed that fire inspection. Uh, we passed the health inspection, we passed everything, but we just don't have the money right now in our general account to pay this fee. But we're very close friends of all the departments here at the township and, uh, we're just asking this one year if we can be waived from $270 and we promise we'll try and be better next year. But we are, as I say, we are property, property rich and financially poor right at the moment. And I'll be happy to ask you any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I'm going to have a mover and seconder to get it on. More, I have councillor Moore and deputy Cabrel. But the delegation from the Communities Connecting Children regarding a request to waive the campground licensing be received. And at this time I will turn for comments or questions. Councillor Moore and then councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan. I would be happy to support your request. I'd be happy to support up to $1,000 out of my councillor fund that I have available and haven't used. But I think your charity is well-deserving it. And it's, you know, Girl Guides have a special place in my heart too. So I'd be happy to donate.
Thank you. You're all welcome to come for a tour or even have a meeting there. We'd love that. By the way, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Sylvia Dufray. I'm the executive director of the charity and the chairman of the camp committee, so.
Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coghlan and through the chair to Sylvia. Thank you for coming. I've been to your camp with my wife and my grandkids. We see the great work that you do there. I'd be, uh, I'm very pleased that you solved your water problem. Uh, I know that was a big obstacle to overcome and I'd be happy to, uh, support councillor Moore and I'd be happy to offer $1,000 from my discretionary fund to donate to the camp as well to help you get through these, uh, these first few months and first few years. So, um, I would propose that we receive this clerk-martial and that we, I guess that would be an amendment that we would... I don't know if any other councillors would like to join in and speak to it as... would, I don't know if any other councillors would like to join in and speak to it as.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm at a loss for words. That's much more than I dreamed.
No, that's, that's great. I think I was fortunate enough to go out on a day trip with some girlfriends out to the camp and the different sections that you have, but the chuck wagons are definitely one of my favorite areas. So we do have an amendment here proposed, so I would have it moved by councillor Moore, seconded by councillor Thompson, that 1,000 from the Ward Three and 1,000 from the Ward Four discretionary funds be applied. All those in favour? Oh, and I'm, oh, and I'm going to turn to Clerk Anesworth.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just in addition, so that it's not forgotten, the waiving of the campground licensing fee as well.
Thank you. So that council here.
That's $270.
That council hereby authorizes the campground licensing fee be waived for the Matheson Creek campground, and that 1,000 from the Ward Three and 1,000 from the Ward Funds discretionary funds be donated. All those in favour? And that has carried. Thank you. At this time, we will now go on to question period, and I will turn to our clerk for registered questions.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. We have had five question periods submissions register for tonight's meeting, so I will call first upon Mary Lynn Atkinson, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Lynn Atkinson. I live at 49 Willow Landing. And before I posed my question, I would also like to say thank you to the council for your endless hours of boring reading and serving our community. So what I would like to, I was here last week, and there were many very excellent presentations, and one of them was a suggestion that this whole issue of the Berry amalgamation be posed as a referendum. So my question is, is this council willing to make this an election issue and pose a referendum question on the upcoming ballot for the next election?
Thank you for your question, and I think that that would be up to the province. We have a deadline of September 30th, which is past, but thank you for your question. And our next question?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I will now call upon Jack Hannah.
Jack Hannah, 22 Frit Boulevard, Midhurst. And I have to say, council, I take no pleasure in being here tonight to criticize members of council. I know you're going to pass this, Lisa, I believe you're going to pass this, a boundary adjustment tonight because you're going to use your mayor powers, mayor, and with the support of councillors Thompson and Garwood. But the other problem I have with this, there's been a lot of misinformation that's come out to residents, and a lot of it's been generated by members of this council. And I think it's important that it be on the public record, because if there's any appeals, criminal charges, investigations, justice reviews, or appeals, or civil suits, I think it's important this to be on the public record. So my point being is that, Mayor Coglan, you have stated a number of times that the services of water and wastewater on Bayfield Street couldn't be done for a decade. You know it could be done in two to three years. There's documentation to prove that. So again, when false information comes forward to residents, they believe what you're going to do tonight is necessary. And I think that these false information things need to be corrected, and I think there's an obligation on people that have made false statements to correct them. The other thing I would suggest is that you're not the only one that's made these statements. There's been statements made that to provide water and sewer to Bayfield Street is going to cost $150 million or more. Councillor Thompson, you stated in an interview with David Strong that it would cost $50,000 to $100,000. And if David Strong's here tonight, he can confirm that. You know it's not going to cost that. You know taxpayers don't have to pay any of the costs of the water and wastewater to be done down Bayfield Street. The thing that's so important about this is those projects that are at the top of Bayfield Street, Silin, Remington, are important. We need to have them. They're important, but they should be kept in spring water and serviced by spring water. Without servicing them by spring water, we're losing an opportunity to provide a lot of commercial development and collect the taxes on Bayfield Street. And I think, council, you're making a mistake by not endorsing a project that would make that happen.
And that was two minutes.
Using the scare tactics, which has happened a number of times, people saying, if you don't take the deal from Barry, the province is going to give up this process and take it. You know that's not true. If you, if spring water did absolutely nothing, I could see the province doing that. But you've invented a thing called spring water project or made in spring water option. And I think the made in spring water option provides the opportunity for this township to do all the things that Barry's going to do with your land, with our lands. We need to keep the land to ourselves.
And that's been two minutes.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
It's been over two minutes.
I'm over two minutes?
Yeah.
That's unfortunate. I hope some, and council wants to ask me questions so I can continue.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm disappointed. You folks have really betrayed the residents.
And the next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. The next speaker registered is Christopher Harrys.
Don't think I'll go over. Can you hear me?
I can. Just your name and address, please.
Oh, yeah. Christopher Harrys, 1186 Floss Road 10 East. We should change that, you know. It's a silly name for a, for a road. Much better to be Concession 10 of Floss Township, or I can think of some other names, too. But anyway, Floss Road 10 East, Springwater Township, I guess. All I wanted to say was that it seems to me, and I was at the county council yesterday, I was surprised to learn that Barry's request for urgent lands is based upon the idea that by 2051 or by 2061, they're going to need all the land that they can get, because they're looking at a doubling of the population and so on, and they need this land immediately. I don't think they need the land immediately. I think if you look up Bayfield Street a little into Barry, you'll see that the use of land is, is, is changing very rapidly, just as the economy is changing very rapidly, the sort of economy that we're in. The, the moles that used to grace the city, and we always used to think, where was the next mole going? Well, there's not going to be any more moles. The moles are closing down. Hudson's Bay has closed down. They could put something there. They're already talking, and in parts of Ontario, they're already building housing in former moles. Land use planning is not something that can be done anymore on a basis of what's needed by 2061. Anyway, the point I wanted to make was that there's an obvious way to solve this problem, and that is to make it an election issue. I don't care whether it's on a referendum. A referendum would be great, but why not leave it until the election, campaign on this question, and let the people decide? It's the people's decision. There's no urgency. The urgency that is pretended is, it's not real. There's no urgency to reach an immediate decision, except, of course, to postpone the decision. I should, I think we should say to the city of Barry, no, you cannot have the land. We're going to ask the people of Springwater Township what should happen to the land, and they'll make the decision.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Steve Holder. Okay, it looks like he's not here. He did send a short write-up of what his question period submission is, so I can read that now. I would note that there is some personal information identified within his question that I am, I am not going to read, but I will, I'll read the, the question. Why was a member of the public allowed to verbally attack four members of council during the October 8th meeting? Why did the chair not stop the abuse, but during the October 1st council meeting, at approximately 1 hour 15 minutes in, the chair had no problem stopping her husband from questioning councillor Fisher? So why has there been no public apology by the mayor or this individual?
Our next submission?
Next is Roy Monk. Not here. Okay, not seeing him. He did also send up a, send in a write-up, so I will read that. Council and staff, after reading all of the attachments for the October 15th council meeting, I can't find the timeline, whereas Barry will start and finish the servicing of the water wastewater for the Bayfield projects. All I can ascertain is they need to replace or produce new 13 kilometers of piping. This could take what the mayor has maintained as a decade. Maybe her worship mixed up the three year for spring water with Barry's decade. Can anyone enlighten me?
Thank you, Clerk Marshall. That is five presenters this evening, and at this time, council, we can move on to our minutes. Councillor Alexander?
Understanding that the bylaw is five questions, but also understanding the importance of the decision being made tonight, and the fact that I believe this council has said we value the public input, I would like to, I don't know if I put emotional for it or how I do this, to waive the procedural bylaw to if there is any other members of the public that would like to speak.
Thank you. And if there are members of the public that would like to speak to items that are on the agenda this evening, that we can absolutely have, as far as this being a statement period and a personal attack period, that's, that will not be happening this evening. So if there's any questions pertaining to the agenda? Just your name and address, please.
John Spring, 2438 County Road 92, Elmville, Ontario. Madam Mayor, question period is for what is concerning the public. So my concern is, two weeks ago, tonight, I asked the mayor a question, and what I said was, was what she said in a meeting when she was going out, that no one could know that I've been here, I have a divided council, and if they find out, it'll never pass. You told me that you were misquoted. Would you mind telling us what you did say?
And the correspondence that you're speaking to was provided to this council as a recollection of an individual of a meeting that happened two years ago, two, three years?
You're not answering the question. I asked you to tell us what you did say, ask, to tell us what you did say, please.
Mr. Spring, I do remember being at the meeting in Orodon, Medonte, but I have no recollection or notes or any way of saying what I did and what I didn't.
Now you don't remember being at the meeting?
And thank you for your concern, Mr. Spring.
Could you answer my question, please?
I just did.
No, you didn't.
Mr. Spring, I did attend a meeting. I was there. And as per what I said in quotations, I do not recall. And that is not.
Well, then how did you know that I misquoted you?
Because it was, the quote was provided to this council, and the quote that you provided at the meeting was not the same as what was in quotations in the recollection of another individual.
Well, there were two other individuals there that heard you say it. Maybe they can refresh you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's Roberta Watt, 29 Frit Boulevard, Midhurst. I'd like to say that the provision of strong mayor powers by Premier Ford to municipalities and more specifically Mayor Coglan's choice to take advantage of strong mayor powers with respect to the spring water boundary change erodes the democratic right to be heard by the people most affected. The residents of Ward Four and Five and the respective councillors Moore and Fisher have no voice at the table despite support by Deputy Mayor Cabral and councillor Alexander. The mayor does not represent a specific ward, nor do councillors Garwood or Thompson represent residents who would be directly affected by this proposed boundary change. Yet with strong mayor powers and the support of councillors Garwood and Thompson, the mayor is making unilateral decisions on this matter. Decisions that will have a great impact in the future of Springwater Township and Simcoe County. Decisions that will have indeterminate detrimental financial, environmental, commercial, and residential impacts. I'm going to skip because I know that you're going to cut me off before I get through all of this. I feel like we haven't been provided with true consultation. Basically, lip service has been paid in order to satisfy the requirements of the municipal act by the October 8th meeting. We were advised that council would make a decision on October 15th. We also learned that on October 8th, the meeting that councillor Thompson wholeheartedly supported the proposed boundary change, and that is discussions with MP Downey, that Mr. Downey also supported the boundary changes. Let me be clear, a decision is not being made by council tonight. For council to make a decision, each elected official would have a vote that mattered and that represented the majority of their stakeholders, their constituents, the residents that elected them in a democratic process. This is not what is happening here. The voice of the few who do not represent the true stakeholders are making a decision. On whose behalf then are councillors Thompson and Garwood supporting the mayor, not the respective wards of Elmville and Anton Mills. These wards are not affected. So effectively, a decision about the spring water boundary being made by a mayor and two councillors who do not have a dog in this fight, three blind mice. Meanwhile, the councillors that do represent the true stakeholders, councillors Moore and Fisher, along with the deputy mayor Cabral and councillor Alexander, are lame ducks. All because we have a mayor circumventing democracy as we know it, because she is swaddled in strong mayor powers as bestowed by Premier Ford. This isn't just about a boundary change. This is about the erosion of democracy by providing the head of council with centralized executive authority to take action and make decisions on a unilateral basis. This is about the provincial government having a greater control over municipal affairs. This is erosion of democracy at the, at the municipal level.
Thank you for your comments.
You're very welcome.
If there are any additional speakers, I would ask that we respectfully maintain the two minute. You're more than welcome to come forward, but would just ask that we refrain to a two minute time, please. Thought I had a mic button, but. Just your name and address, please.
My name is Rick Crook, and I live at 716 St. Vincent Street. I'm sorry, before we start, is this about questions or comments?
There's been both this evening. Please, please go.
Just for a little bit of comic relief, where is Carmen Santiago? Wait a second, where is Quinton, Quinto Annabelle? Because he happened to be the lawyer in Innisville when, when Innisville got annexed, annexation went through, which was basically moratorium lands. And I'd like to read you something, because I read about 500 pages of the transcript. I believe the province has acted as necessary to provide Barry with sufficient additional lands to accommodate the future growth for the next 25 years. And it will still not impact the fiscal future of the town of Innisville in Simcoe County. Almost all the lands being added to Barry are part of moratorium lands that were set apart 30 years ago to provide Barry with additional space in the future. This was from 2009. The land got annexed, and Innisville got nothing. Bill 196 provides a solution for all three levels of government, being the province, the county, and the municipalities. It will allow people and jobs to be located in the hub of the four under quarter, with its urban growth to be enjoyed by all. In the future, all three stakeholders will enjoy by all. In the future, all three stakeholders will be able to provide transportation, service infrastructure, and employment strategies required for smart growth in the entire region. Oh, by the way, Quinton Annabelle was also the lawyer in Bolton, Callan, Calladen, but they kind of operated. But they got kind of operating, but they were writing bylaws for Bolton and Calladen. But they're also working out of the same building as the developers they were also working for. They're also on, Loopster Nixon is also on the list of people working for the Midland Landowners Group, and apparently working for Springwater Council at the same time. I just find this a severe conflict of interest, and I don't really believe anything they have to say. Now, going back to Midhurst and the water, what have you, something happened years and years ago where there was, it was Mayor French and Jack Hannah. And they were running around saying, we're going to make a bylaw, so our residents of Midhurst don't have to worry about hooking up to a pipe. And then Mayor Coughlin, it's time.
That's been two minutes. Thank you.
That's two minutes?
That's been two minutes. Thank you very much for respecting the chamber.
Have a great night.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to ask questions? At this time, may I have a mover and seconder to approve the council minutes, please? Councillors Garwood and Alexander, that the minutes of council listed here and be approved as presented. Minutes of the regular council of October first, twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions on these minutes? Not seeing any. All those in favor? And that has carried, may I have a mover and seconder to receive the board and committee organization minutes, please? Councillors Fisher and Thompson, that the minutes of boards, committees, and organizations listed here and received for information. Minutes of the Springwater Sports Heritage Committee meeting of June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Minutes of the Severn Sound Environmental Association Board meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Minutes of the Severn Sound Environmental Association Board meeting of July second, twenty twenty-five. And minutes of the Ottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority Board of Directors meeting of September twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. Any questions on these minutes? All those in favor? And that has carried. Oh, clerk, my script wouldn't be updated. I will read what we have, and if you could, yeah, thank you. At this time, may I have a mover and seconder for the City of Barry proposed boundary adjustment correspondence? Councillor Alexander and councillor Garwood, that correspondence items listed nine point two through nine point thirteen be received as information. Nine point two is correspondence from Loopster Nixon on behalf of SCS Consulting Group on behalf of the Midhurst Landowners Group dated October first, twenty twenty-five, regarding the joint land, land needs analysis study. Nine point three is correspondence from the County of Simcoe dated October second, twenty twenty-five. Nine point four is correspondence from Davies Howe LLP on behalf of the Midhurst Landowners Group dated October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point five is correspondence from Davies Howe LLP dated October sixth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point six is a statement from the County of Simcoe dated October eighth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point seven is correspondence from Davies Howe LLP dated October tenth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point eight is correspondence from Monica Nick dated October tenth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point nine is correspondence from Goodman's LLP dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point ten is correspondence from Dumalin LLP dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Nine point eleven is correspondence from Davies Howe LLP dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I will just turn to the clerk for twelve and thirteen.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. As directed at the five P M. Special meeting by council, the legal opinion, so nine point twelve is the legal opinion from Loopster Nixon dated October fifteenth. And then nine point thirteen is the legal opinion from Airdan Burles dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Counsel, at this time, is there any to be pulled? Comments, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin, just with respect to nine, twelve, and thirteen, will the agenda be updated and then changed, or?
Clerk Marshall?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. Through you to the deputy mayor, the agenda has been updated with those pieces of those legal opinions, so they are available to the public now.
Not seeing anything further? All those in favor? And that has carried. May I have a mover and seconder for the City of Barry final boundary adjustment proposal, please? I have councillor Thompson and councillor Moore, that the report from the township senior staff regarding the City of Barry final boundary adjustment proposal dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five be received. And that option one, that council for the township of Springwater accepts the City of Barry's boundary adjustment proposal presented in the form of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, and sorry, and inform the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing of its decision, and that a bylaw be created and at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of council for consideration. Or option two, that council of the township of Springwater rejects the City of Barry boundary adjustment proposal as presented and inform the Minister of the Municipal Affairs and Housing of its decision. And at this time, council, I can open it up for comments and questions. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I would like to put option one on the floor.
Thank you. And before we, well, I can get a seconder, councillor Garwood. So we have option one on the floor and comments and questions on option one. Councillor Fisher.
Well, it should come as no surprise. I absolutely do not support uh, option one. I am not in support of annexation or a boundary adjustment with the City of Barry. I think we've heard it over the last few meetings, and again, here tonight, this should be an election issue. I don't think we should be bullied into a particular date, or frankly, scare tactics being used on us with the City of Innisville. This should be an election issue. Not one of us, including the mayor, was elected on a boundary adjustment. We were elected on different platforms, but never once on a boundary adjustment. The people, and I'm not talking about people with vested interests or pieces of land, but we consistently hear from the people, the taxpaying citizens who come forward, that they do not want this. They want more of a say in this. They do feel it's rushed, as the county has said. Um, and this does affect all of Springwater. Uh, you know, it affects wards four and five, as was said tonight. But, you know, this will erode our, our taxation ability. It will erode our financial future, and it will make its way all the way to Elmville, Mr. Garwood. So this is something that, that we should all in every ward be against. Uh, we should not be opting for this. I also have to say, something that was said in the last meeting that struck me, that, that.
And understanding that our last meeting is closed session, I'm just being mindful that this would be from open session.
I mean, last meeting on the, on the eighth, sorry, uh, not the closed session. I'd also like to clarify something, you know, in the last meeting, it was insinuated that that after speaking with Mr. Downey and a slew of other politicians, that, that Mr. Thompson had arrived at a yes decision. Mr. Downey, and I've discussed this with Mr. Downey, as well as other people. Mr. Downey does, is not in favor or against. He's been very neutral. That's not true. So I think it needs to be said, the endorsement of our provincial representative was not true. I've had many people call me over this. Mr. Downey is not endorsing this.
I have councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. So if you go back and I could go over my statement again, I didn't say I had MPP Downey's endorsement. I said I spoke to him to get some advice, and I spoke out, spoke to a lot of people in that list. So to suggest I said he had an endorsement is a fabrication of the facts. And I don't have a history on this council of fabricating facts. I try to speak the truth and the things that I, I stand by every statement I made in my statement last week. And to suggest that this is rushed is another fabrication of a fact. The timing of this, this, this whole thing began in the fall of twenty twenty-three when we went to the city of Barry for cross-border servicing. And from that meeting, there, a framework agreement came, and the city of Barry presented to it, us, to us. Shortly, shortly after that, we, as a council, decided to walk away from this discussions. Our mayor was barred from modifying or entertaining any new framework agreement on our behalf. The discussions went on with the city and the province without us present. That is a fact. Another fact, on January twenty twenty-four, Premier Ford, at a press conference, when he was in Barry, presenting Barry with a big check for all the great work that they were doing, called out our council specifically and questioned, questioned our intellectual capacity. On May twenty twenty-four, the provincial land facilitator was appointed, and we were fast forced back into the room and forced back to the table after months being on the sidelines and not being able to be in the room. During the scope of the facilitation process, the mapping grew. May first, the province awarded strong mayor powers to a hundred and sixty-nine municipalities. I supported Mayor Coughlin to use these powers to get back to the table and to try to work on a deal for our residents, all of our residents. And when, just to clarify, when we're elected, we represent all residents. I don't just represent the residents in Menacing and Anton Mills and Midhurst, which is part of my ward. We're called or elected to represent all residents. I've approached this as if it was in my own backyard.
I'm going to ask members of the, of the gallery to have respect for the chambers, please.
This past summer, the province imposed a September thirtieth deadline to come to some kind of framework agreement. This process has hardly been rushed. We've had plenty of time. We, we've, I've counted over twenty meetings, twenty public meetings that the boundary discussions have been on the agenda. So if residents, if you haven't been paying attention, or you haven't decided until to make some comments, we had residents trying to make statements tonight where last week was set aside for that. There's been lots of time, and I can tell you, if I ran my business this way, I would be out of business. It's time to make a decision, one way or the other. Some of the highlights for me of the deal includes the financial compensation. It includes the cross-border servicing for the Sadlin and Remington, and it's clear that, that the preferred choice by both of these developers and their planners is the Barry servicing option. I like the protection of the, of the environment, of the, of the environmentally sensitive lands. I like the economic development that we're going to get into, and the protection for farmers and the healthcare piece. The province is asking us to make a decision. I'm not going to skirt that responsibility. I've made it very clear as to where I stand on my decision and why my decision is the way that it is. I stand by that. Thank you, Mayor Coughlin.
Thank you. Other members? Deputy Cabrel and councillor Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I want to set the record straight, too. Boundary discussions didn't start in the fall of twenty twenty-three, councillor Thompson. They started in January of twenty twenty-three. They were discussions that were being had between the City of Barry, and then the Orem Adonte was invited to the discussion. And then there was a meeting where staff, C A O, directors, they were invited to a meeting with the mayors and deputy mayors of Springwater, Orem Adonte, and the City of Barry, except this mayor or did not invite her deputy mayor because we did not know about those meetings. And that kind of makes me feel like there's been a lot going on in the background, sir, that you don't know about. And maybe you should enlighten yourself. And I'm not trying to attack councillor Thompson. I think he has his interests where he thinks they should be. I've never been a supporter of the boundary adjustment. I really thought that we would be able to come to some kind of an agreement where all of the parties would be able to benefit. There were three scenarios that were put forth by the Hemsden Report. The only one that's ever been focused on is the boundary adjustment. And I'd also like to point out that engaging with the facilitation process was a voluntary process. We weren't ordered to do it. This council voluntarily decided to participate. So this is an extremely difficult spot to be in, and frankly, I don't believe we would ever be considering ceding our jurisdictional lands to the City of Barry at this point in time. But here we are. We're being told it's a win for Springwater, and that we're getting cross-border servicing on Bayfield Street corridor in exchange for thousands of acres of spring water land. This is strange since there is adequate documentation and a sincere willingness and ability to provide water and wastewater within Springwater itself along the Bay Street corridor to service south to the border of the City of Barry. However, it now seems that landowners dictate where they get their servicing from and where their land holdings will be located. Let's just move the boundary, and things will be better. Don't want to build in Springwater? Let's just move the boundary line, and we'll build in Barry. This may very well be the reason for this boundary adjustment, annexation, whatever you might like to call it, but there have been many questions about the process and who is actually benefiting from it all. When I hear residents speaking out against it, they are, I'm going to call it rank-and-file residents from Springwater Township. When I hear other people speaking about supporting it, they tend to have a vested interest in moving it forward for their own financial gain. I'm not going to kid myself or anybody else. But, you know, when, when you're looking at this here and you have to think about it, you have to think about all of the ramifications. Residents first, why their concerns must lead. Residents will carry ongoing taxes, service costs, legacy asset maintenance, and environmental impacts for decades. Developers capture most short-term upside. Democratic accountability. Council exists to protect community interests. Decisions that transfer public value to private parties will require clear public consent and transparent justification. Local quality of life, watershed health, traffic, noise, parks, schools, and neighborhood character directly affect residents, not transient investors. Process fairness. Public engagement has been late and fragmented, especially the technical data that was provided to the public just back in September. Meaningful resident input must be, must precede irreversible boundary or servicing decisions. Financial and fiscal harms to Springwater residents, lost tax base, annexing consolidated developer parcels removes future property tax growth that funds municipal services. Springwater keeps fixed operating costs while losing long-term recurring tax and D C revenues, forcing higher rates for the remaining taxpayers. Inadequate compensation. A one-time payment cannot replace the net present value of multi-decade revenue streams without rigorous NPV calculation indexing. Development charges that would fund local roads, parks, and trunk infrastructure will flow to Barry, undermining Springwater's capital programs. Legacy capital obligations and lifestyle costs for existing assets will remain with Springwater, unless explicitly and securely transferred and funded. Cross-border servicing creates extra pumping, owner and, owner and maintenance exposure, and engineering complexity, increasing lifecycle costs for residents and developers. This also impacts the Midhurst secondary plan, which we've been working with in the housing delivery that it was going to provide. Loss of assessment in D C revenues stalls implementation and delays housing phases. Removing contiguous lands prevents Springwater from sequencing developing to meet affordable and middle, missing middle housing targets. Unclear servicing regimes and shifting approvals raise financing costs and start, and slow starts worsening the current housing stall we're experiencing right now. Local procurement, business taxes, and job multipliers shrink when development shifts jurisdictions from Springwater to Barry. Concentrated growth in Barry diverts investment and creates land value arbitrage favoring annexed landowners and developers. County assessment patterns and service approachment become distorted, surrounding towns, towns, excuse me, townships may inherited redistributed service burdens. What that really means is that what we lose here, everybody in Simcoe County has to pick it up. And the fifteen thousand dollars per developer acre, and I do recall eight, eight million dollars being mentioned earlier, that it was the most lucrative deal in provincial history, and then it got bumped up to seventy-five, then it was twelve-five, now it's fifteen. Even modest annual tax and D C yields produce a net value well above the fifteen K over twenty to thirty years at standard municipal discount rates. A flat fee erodes in real terms and gives no upside sharing if development outperforms projections. Net effect, net effect. Annexation as proposed redistributes public value to Barry and private landowners while fracturing Springwater's ability to implement the Midhurst secondary plan, finance necessary infrastructure, and protect resident interests. Prioritizing residents requires rejecting the current framework unless replaced with a properly based compensation package and enforceable environment protections and binding provisions that preserve local planning, control, and community benefits. In a nutshell, folks, I wasn't able to support this at the beginning. I was hoping at some point in time that all of the partners would be able to come together and actually move forward collectively. I was hoping at some point in time that all of the partners would be able to come together and actually move forward collectively together to make certain things happen, but it seems to be that that's not the case. So as much as I would like to try and do something for the city of Berry, the current framework agreement, I, I cannot support it the way it's currently written.
Thank you. Counsel Alexander.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coughlin. So there's been a lot said over the last few weeks around this. There will be a lot said tonight. There's a, we've had a lot of reports. For me, I'm looking at three kind of buckets when I look at this. The first one is the cross-border servicing piece. This is the piece that we consistently hear on the four sides, specifically from different development groups, that this allows them to develop quicker and sooner. I said this last meeting and I will say it again, we have no cross-border servicing agreement. I'm going to read and I'll take sections, but it's six point four of the agreement. In case you want to read the whole thing to know that I'm not misrepresenting what's being said. The city has offered to enter into a cross-border servicing agreement with the township to address the township's needs related to the development of lands in the vicinity of, vicinity of the Bayfield corridor. At the township's request, which I actually did not realize, but apparently it was at our request, the parties agree that the cross-border servicing will be dealt with in a future agreement. Going to the end, all future agreements must adhere to the principle of full cost recovery by the city. This refers to all capital investment required to provide the servicing and ongoing operation and maintenance costs. We have no agreement. We don't have a timeline. We've seen no technical studies. We have no idea how much this is going to cost Springwater. We do, on the other hand, have a maiden Springwater solution through a long-term partner that has been fully vetted by our staff, our engineering consultant, all of whom have come to the agreement that we can do this on our own and in a timely fashion. Yet we continue to use this cross-border servicing, which is not actually a part of this agreement. If we could, if Berry could do it quicker, they would have provided the technical studies. We would have the details and we would have an agreement in front of us. So I would please ask everyone just to take that off the table because it's a line in an agreement that actually says nothing. The second piece is the county opinion. We are supposed to be looking at this as a regional market area. We've seen numerous studies that talk about a regional market area. We should be looking at this with the city of Berry, with the township of Oromodonte, and specifically with county council. So again, I am going to quote from a statement from county council from the warden. We cannot, however, support the unclear agendas and mandate that has led us to the most recent versions of the vast and rushed proposed annexation mapping. Skipping down to the end of the paragraph, quite simply, this process has, this process and the suspected influence behind it have led to the process seemingly losing control as well as clouding the initial goal of any potential win-win situation. Sorry, win-win outcome. The county does not support this. We have a solution that we've made for ourselves and yet we are continually pushing forward with something that does not support a regional market solution. I just, I don't understand why. Lastly, the residents. Again, the majority, the vast majority of the residents that we have heard of that do not have a vested interest are opposed to this. We heard from them last week. We've heard from more tonight. I think we all hear from them pretty much everywhere we go. This is, as it should be, a huge topic. To the questions posed tonight of should this be a referendum or an election issue? One hundred percent it should be. I stand firmly behind that. So I will ask the members on this, of this council that are thinking of moving forward with this. When you say we represent all of Springwater, Counselor Thompson, you are correct. All, you are right. We represent all of them. So I ask each person here specifically, if your house was affected or your child's house was about to get moved out of this township, would you still be supporting this?
Thank you, Counsel Alexander. Are there any other members of, Counsel Moore? And Counsel Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. Uh, first, first I'd like to just take the opportunity to thank all that came out at the public meeting last week. To those who continue to write letters and contact me through email and phone calls, please note that I play, I pay close attention. Last meeting, we heard from very articulate and well-read members of the public who have genuine concerns with the terms of the framework. The rust, the rushed nature in which we find ourselves having to make a decision while highlighting the overall process flaws, again, leaving us with many questions unanswered. I heard things like negotiate wisely, create meaningful amendments, indigenous consultation, binding protections, referendums, rural determination, determinism, sorry, alongside a growth-in-place-first approach. But most often the question I get is why the rush? Why, if we are considering planning and planning principles out to two thousand and fifty-one, can we not take the time to make sure we get this right? I have questions that remain unanswered. A big concern for me has been the different watersheds existing at the top of Bayfield Street. Being the NBCA managing the Springwater effluence, say, in one direction, and then the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority managing what goes their way into Lake Simcoe phosphorus levels. I haven't seen a single report from the LS CRA or the NBCA. I had requested information about this several times, but still I did not hear back. I'd like to see those reports and I'd like to have, you know, the Lake Simcoe folks weigh in. Simcoe County, again, not supportive of the current terms of this forced annexation plan as currently outlined. The area being proposed has expanded greatly and without the support of all parties, which includes the potential transfer of significant economic unemployment and non-developable lands. The Hemsun report clearly outlined that Berry has enough employment land now out to which can carry them to two thousand and fifty-one. So why change that to the two thousand and sixty-one date? We are still receiving information daily. Today, Mr. Mullen, Alien Associates, I see you sitting here, sorry to center you out. Um, but in a report dated today, clearly states, there remain several areas where clarification and additional information and detail is needed to improve accuracy and transparency. In particular, slide forty-two, which compares total water, wastewater, stormwater and transportation costs for each scenario. And I'll just preface this by saying he's speaking about the RV Anderson report. Such as water and wastewater treatment for scenario two and three, which could be significant. These omissions could affect how the relative cost differences between scenarios are interpreted. This paragraph is especially important for the landowners along the side, along the border of Springwater and Berry. You need to pay close attention to that because what it is saying is we don't have that information to provide to you. We don't have those costs. They were left off the RV Anderson report and haven't been included. We certainly haven't seen them. As a rapidly growing region, growth must be well-coordinated. And I'm not opposed to and would encourage continuing a conversation with the county of Simcoe and Oromodonte in a coordinated fashion that respects and protects and considers the entire region's best interest, including economic growth, services and taxation protections. Like I say, we are in a high-growth area and we have a lot to look forward to. We are well-positioned to do this ourselves with the assistance of great partners and the province. If we are rushed down a path, mistakes and omissions happen. Our future is uncertain. And from what I can hear, what I hear is that residents want things from their community. They want things from their council. They may want some shopping. Most certainly, they want a rec center. I'm not sure how we can ever afford to do that at this point. You know, if we, if we look at twenty-three million dollars over five years, the cost of a rec center are, I think our last quote was between sixty and seventy million. It's not going to happen. From a main street, I think people want, it stands out, becomes a center of activity for the township. Though how do we afford that? Well, we can't. We can't. Residents want self-determination and control and the only way is good planning principles. I would also support the referendum. We certainly did not campaign on this issue. I think it should go to the people to decide. I fully support that. I also want to speak briefly to more information that we received today. Without, without getting into too specifics, but the legal opinions we received today on the use of strong mayor's powers are now public. And we find ourselves in a precarious situation. Um, later in tonight's meeting, there is a motion on the floor that speaks to what a judicial review would look like. And I don't think we have any choice at this point. I really don't. I think we are in a, in a position that we either have to vote this down because of what our legal representatives have advised us, or we potentially could defer until we have a judicial review and then a judge decides. But we do find ourselves in a position where we really and legally cannot make a decision. So I'll just end with that. I appreciate your patience. Again, please continue to send me your, your emails and feedback. Um, but that's where I stand.
Counsel Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I do have some prepared notes, but I just have been making a couple of notes that'll indicate first. I have no problem with this being an election issue. I don't think anyone up here does. We've been consistent from the start that regardless of the decisions made today or it's made a year from now, the decisions that we make throughout a term should reflect upon who somebody votes for. But this is also not political. We were elected to make many decisions that we had no idea that we were walking into. And sure, I will agree that this is the largest one. I will absolutely agree with that, as we've said many times at this table. But the reality is, we were elected and folks cast their votes for us to make effective decisions for this municipality. But again, if you want to make it an election issue, absolutely, it's going to be one regardless whether you make it one or not. It already is. Also, this is beyond one individual person. If the residents feel as if any one of us is making the incorrect decision on this one or any others, then so be it. Do not cast that vote and pick the appropriate representative to lead the municipality. That's what elections are for. We have many votes over the last three years and will have many over the next year that will pile all together and give plenty of opportunity and information to our community. Second, we consistently talk about the options that are made available to us. Yes, we have an absolute excellent partner with the Midhurst Landowners Group. We have been successful with them for decades and I hope we are, continue to be successful with that group for many more decades to come. We know that there is significant growth coming in the southern part of this municipality and we have a great partner there. Choosing to go one path or another does not say someone is not a good partner or a good partner. It's the options that are available to us at this table. But we also need to remember what the province has been communicating. And we are contributing to misinformation when we pretend like there's anything else available to us, but make a deal or not. And that not has consequences. We know that. We have seen that in the past. And we all speak about who we hear from and the folks that want to share their respective opinions. Well, I can also add to that. This past weekend, I had an opportunity to speak to hundreds of people at a local community event about this one specific issue. And the overwhelming response was do what is best for Springwater. While we might not like every aspect of it, I don't like every aspect of it. Do what is best for Springwater. So we all hear different perspectives. But I'm going to read my prepared notes here, which will also address some of this. Good evening, everybody. This process has been a long and challenging road, one that has demanded considerable time and effort from both council and staff, while also becoming a central topic of conversation across our community over the past two years. I understand and respect that there will never be unanimous agreement on the best path forward here. However, it is our responsibility to make decisions that protect the future of our municipality. While we may differ on what that future looks like, our shared goal remains the same, ensuring Springwater's long-term success. Many residents have asked about the next step in this process. I'd like to take the time to provide some clarity, not look backwards, but look forwards. This evening, council will vote to either endorse or not endorse the cross-border servicing and boundary adjustment proposal. Following council's decision, all related information, including public input, reports, studies and professional opinions will be provided and reviewed to the office of the provincial land facilitator, who will make a recommendation to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. From there, the province will determine whether or not to introduce legislation. I was recently asked about my position on this matter. And while I have been clear, I'll restate it. In my view, annexation occurs when one municipality seeks another land with little or nothing in return. While some may disagree, I believe the best way to prevent annexation is to be at the table, building relationships, negotiating in good faith and securing the strongest possible deal for our residents. Use Innisville as an example. Like any negotiation, no agreement is perfect. But what I consider a success is seeing the financial commitment to Springwater more than double since the original proposal just a few months ago. Protecting active farms within the affected area through a twenty-year agricultural tax phase in, the first of its kind in the province of Ontario, and establishing a cross-border servicing agreement that will provide ongoing taxation and development charge revenue for decades to come. Leadership often requires making difficult and uncomfortable decisions like this one. And sometimes saying no when it's easy isn't true leadership at all. From the beginning, I've had my reservations, but with humility, I've come to realize, as many in our community have, that our energy is better spent negotiating the best possible outcome for Springwater's future rather than casting accusations or spending taxpayer dollars on internal investigations for political gain. The reality is, the provincial government has been clear in its desire to see a framework agreement reached by September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, which was two weeks ago. With respect, suggesting otherwise misleads the public. I can't speak for anyone else, but I can tell you this. I have done my research, I've heard and read the reports. I've listened to the experts and to our residents. I have spent countless hours with our team internally and I have spent time face-to-face with the provincial land facilitator to better understand every angle of this issue. And while ninety percent of the feedback I receive recognizes that changes may be inevitable, our residents expect us to fight for the best possible deal on their behalf. So my vote this evening should come at no surprise. I work for the people of Springwater, not for advocacy groups. I want to thank our staff especially for their dedication and professionalism throughout this process. Springwater is fortunate to have a capable and committed team serving our community. So I'm going to end with that. I'm not going to go backwards. All members of council, I believe, have had an opportunity to speak. Um, in closing, I would like to call the vote. And additionally, I would like to call a recorded vote as well. And I would like to be clear here. Once again, the province has been clear. A framework is required, apologies, I believe Counsel Fisher hasn't spoken. Um, a framework agreement is required to be completed by September thirtieth. It's easy to say no. It's harder to say yes. But we need to ensure that we are fighting for and protecting the future of this municipality. And while it might not be perfect, I'll be the first one to agree to that. And I've had my reservations. It is a difficult thing to do, but we have a clear path forward. Thank you.
Um, thank you. I, I believe Counsel Fisher was the first to speak. So if we are looking to do.
It's a pretty important.
Deputy Counsel Fisher?
Um, respectfully, Counselor Garwood, saying it's not a, a political issue, I actually believe it's a highly political issue. It's a highly political issue that really should go to the polls. Uh, I'll say it once again. Those people voting really should be voting for a platform now more than ever. I also have to say that the province is being used up here as a bit of a scapegoat. What your individual elected officials vote for and how they protect your interests, yea or nay, should be very important to you. So saying eventually the province will do it, I, I've always maintained, I don't buy it, right? Uh, particularly if we had said no strongly from the beginning. Um, I want to go back to something that Counselor Thompson had said that, that he represents or we represent, uh, everybody, not just our wards. He's a hundred percent correct, folks. You're absolutely right. But I can tell you, the people in wards four and five right now are not very impressed with that representation. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, I've used the term railroaded before, but that's from the, the mouths of some of my residents. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, I've used the term railroaded before, but that's from the the mouths of some of my residents. Um, in terms of negotiation, you know, we were told to negotiate. Uh, in the last meeting, people came up and said, get the best deal for Springwater. Okay, you know? Um, but I can tell you, this is not resemble the negotiation, not even close. Um, this is just being pushed along, um, getting offers from Barry that although $22 million seems like a lot of money, spread out over five years, it is not a lot of money. Particularly when we have things like the hub we're looking to build. We won't build it, as Counselor Moore said. Craig Road. Craig Road is vital to Midhurst. Without it, we'll be overrun with traffic. I've gone on and on about this. Uh, so did my predecessor, Mr. Hannah. Craig Road needs to be built. Without the funds, we will not be able to do it. County initiatives like the airport, um, this won't come to fruition. We know that. The county has said as much. You can expect higher taxes and lower services guaranteed. So this is not responsible. And I will say to those who are about to vote in favor of of Barry's proposed annexation, border redrawing, um, you're really contributing to the downfall of Springwater. You know, it's been a slow erosion, but this is really a nail in the coffin moment. And I do thank Mr. Garwood for asking for a recorded vote because people need to know. It will become an election issue. It's just too bad that we are on the precipice of of deciding tonight. We should be deciding a year from now at the polls, right? That's where real representation happens.
Deputy Correll?
And I'll make it short. When it comes to the compensation piece, I'm going to suggest to you that the compensation piece went up because members of this council refused the first offer that was provided to us. It may have gone up after that. It became a closed session matter and bumped up again. Um, I I I think the one piece is this is not easy to say no to either. All right. It's all going to depend on how this plays out after tonight. Not tonight. It'll be how everybody's painted after tonight. How everybody looks, how everybody perceives what happened here this evening. So whether it's yes or whether it's no, um, I think what it has to be is if you've got a moral compass, you need to vote the way you need to vote. And I also think that if you're representing the people in your community and the people that you're in your community are the ones who have been voicing their objection to it to you, then you have to respect the residents of Springwater Township. This is good for the city of Barry. Uh, however, you know, the compensation piece, to be quite frank, really does not truly indicate the amount of revenue and taxation DCs, the development capabilities of Springwater Township, if it were to do it on its own, that this township's capable of. We're being denied that opportunity. And that's one of the reasons why I can't support this. I wish I could, but the framework agreement that's here before us, this council did not come up with that framework agreement. It was two mayors who did that. I wasn't in a position to change it, and I don't think other members of council were in a position to change it. It is what it is. And if you want to cut a piece out, it's too late. So you're either voting for the whole thing. You can't just vote for part of it.
Counselor Garwood, Counselor Moore?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coughlin. And I will make this my final comment because I was the one that did ask for the recorded vote. Um, just thinking about some of the comments that remain tonight, uh, the hub and Craig Road, I'm not quite sure how those projects are in jeopardy, seeing as we were speaking of those projects long before any of this started and will be long after. The taxation that is lost from a boundary adjustment, while it is something and everything matters to any size municipality, it is not going to drastically affect these projects in a way that they won't happen because of it. So that is misinformation. Secondary to that, the slow erosion of Springwater. Respectfully, Counselor Fisher, I don't know what Springwater you live in, but the one that I live in is not eroding at all. And secondary from that, the compensation in regards to what has been received. We were not voting on a deal in May, in June, in July, in August, or September. The plan was always this. The plan was always that there would be public consultation, that there would be studies, that we had to wait for the Hemsin Stage Three report to come back, which came back a month ago, that we were getting legal opinions. So to say that because members of council said no to something five months ago, and they would have just taken that, that again is not accurate information. That was not on the table for a vote. That was to receive it as information back in May. And I didn't vote for that. And I, with humility, can sit there and say, because I had concerns with the original proposal. I went to the mayor. I came to this council. I shared my opinions. So if anyone at this table feels like they didn't have an opportunity to contribute, respectfully, the night of the vote is not the time to share your concerns. It is not the time to sit here and say that you would have voted for something or you hoped to vote for something if you could have made adjustments or suggestions. You can disagree with the mayor. You can disagree with me. You can disagree with any one of us. But at the end of the day, when I pick up the phone and I look through the various proposals, what, five or 10 of them that we have received over the past five months, and I have shared a concern, the mayor's picked up the phone. The mayor's answered my call. I've shared those concerns, and I've asked her to advocate. I asked her to advocate to ensure that our agricultural community was protected. I asked for those things 20 years in the deal. If any other member had those concerns, pick up the phone and call the mayor. You don't have to be best friends, but that is our responsibility. That is our right and our responsibility to protect this community. So I'm not interested in having a fight. We have talked about this consistently for hours. I believe Counselor Thompson noted over 20 meetings, and that's just the public ones. But I also want to end with this. Around the timeline, I believe this council unanimously asked for an extension. Not anyone up here disagrees with that. We all wanted more time. We all wanted the community to have more time. We were told no. So to say that we are rushing this, that is again misinformation. We asked for the province to make an extension. That was not granted. Municipalities are children of the province. We can only do what they indicate. And in this scenario, they provided us a timeline that we're already two weeks behind on. So respectfully, when we are communicating, I please ask that it is accurate information. Thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. Um, important to me is that I go on record, public record, uh, with concern about our legal opinions that we received today. Because should we find ourselves in a situation that we are exposed or in jeopardy, that is a very, very costly process for this township. And I am not in support of putting ourselves in a place where we are going to spend millions on a on a potential either judicial review that takes forever or two lawyers duking it out and a judge finally makes a decision? I don't know. But I do want to say that I'm not in favor of putting ourselves in a situation where we are exposed. So I I would offer an amendment that we defer this decision until we at least sort this piece out because right now we are in a predicament. The framework itself could be could be illegal. So how we vote on something that is maybe or potentially challengeable, I suspect that we will um be hearing from other lawyers. I'm not interested in that, but I am I am willing to put an amendment on the floor that says we defer this until we have better direction from from either this judicial review potentially, that motion that comes forward later, or um we can come together and figure out what a better path forward is for us so that we aren't exposed.
Okay, and I do see that there are seconders for that. I've yet to have an opportunity. Oh, sorry, Counsel Alexander, were you going, were you speaking again? Um, thank you. I I understand the the difficulty in making a decision like this. I understand that we may want to do anything we possibly can to avoid having to make the decision that we've been asked to make tonight. Whether it's saying it needs to be an election issue, the province has not given us that opportunity. Whether it's to say that we need, we got five legal opinions today. So we're going to go get another legal opinion? We know what we need to do. We know that this is being asked of us to make this decision. This is not, the timeline has been laid out to suggest that this is rushed. It is not rushed. This has been a two-year process, and I assure you that last week, we were all speaking to how exhausted we are from this long, long process. So then tonight we say it's rushed. So creating a narrative to allow us to defer this, what new information are we going to get? We have the information. We know what the information is. The information's not going to change. What's going to change is legal opinions. And when we don't like that one, we'll go get another one. We have them. We know that that strong mayors, that the annexation, we know that this is new territory. We know that. Deferring this decision, in my opinion, is simply avoiding this decision. There will not be new information. If we are referring this, if we're looking for another technical report or another lawyer to come in and give us an opinion, that's the discretion of council. But to simply say, I don't want to do this tonight, trust me, our, all of our stomachs felt the exact same way driving to this township tonight. I also don't want to be voting on this. For me, I would like, if there is new information that this council is seeking, I can support that, but to simply have a deferral and push it to another meeting where we do all of this over again. I the the vote has been called. There's also been an amendment. Before before I move to the amendment, I would like to thank the members of the public for being here tonight. I'd like to thank council for this extremely long, extremely difficult. But whether or not members of the public or members of this council feel that I have led us or been had leaderships, whichever, I assure you that every ounce of me has gone into this. That everything that is within me and my gut, like was said this evening, I know what is right for me. That does not mean we need to agree. That's why councils exist. I will be voting in favor of this. I do believe that this is what is best for our future, for the future of the township that we all represent, every ward. At this time on the floor is an amendment, or sorry, a motion to defer, and at that I will be looking for a second or unless there's any comments. Counsel Alexander did have her hand up. Deputy.
So a couple of things. Yes, we've been at this for a long time, two years or whatever, two, two years, two plus years. We're receiving information tonight. Like we, I believe we got four reports added to this meeting that came today. The latest one, I think, was at two or 3:00 PM, that you're rushing to read before you come here. Um, some of them are reports provided by outside groups. Others are ones that we have asked for ourselves. So we are still receiving information. I think it's important to note there we are being asked to make a decision where we have not completed doing our due diligence. When we talk about being business responsible, treating this corporation like it is a business, you do your due diligence before you make a deal. You don't vote when you've received conflicting legal opinions, conflicting information from our own consultant on reports at the 11th hour, hours before we're asked to make this vote. That is not how you responsibly make a deal. So I am, I do not want to kick this down the road. We want to call a vote and call a vote. I'm very clear on how I'm going to vote. We want to defer. I can respect that or refer if you want to know what I would like to refer for, I would like the city of Barry to come back and actually give us a cross-border servicing agreement. If you want to put that on the table, that's what I put on the table.
Thank you. And while I do I will refrain from returning, going to staff on that. Um, what I will note is that to my knowledge, the Centre Algen St. Thomas Cross Border Servicing Agreement is still not finalized. This practice, this practice, we have moved forward. There are five separate parts within there. There's the Little Lake Conservancy Agreement. All of those agreements are part of this agreement. So it's a, and I, and I do apologize because there are professionals here that can provide these answers. But I think that the answers have been provided and how we interpret that answer is is up to us. And I'll follow on Counsel Alexander.
Thank you. So I'm just going to go on a comment there and off the top of my head, I can't remember when the St. Thomas Elgin is a number of years ago. So they still don't have a cross-border servicing agreement. So for the members of the public, the investors that are continuously telling us, you need to take this deal because Barry can service us quicker. We're just being told that it's been years and St. Thomas and Elgin still doesn't have an agreement. Why do you think Springwater and Barry are going to be different?
Thank you. And again, so interesting that the, that the again, whatever comes out of my mouth is just going to be spun around. The team that is negotiating, the team that is negotiating is, we take things for best practice. We understand. That's why there's timelines as part of this framework. Counselor Deputy Correll?
Very, very quick. I know you're the one who actually said it, Mayor Coughlin, about the referral. You know, part of what I, what I'm struggling with is all the information that we did get at the um plenary session was incomplete. And on this agenda, we have um our engineer here, sorry to put you on the spot again, Mr. Mullin, but um, who asked questions and was looking for additional information, and the numbers did not materialize. There's also correspondence on here that also questioned those numbers and how they were arrived at. And the suggestion is that those numbers were somewhat misleading. You know, so what is the best option? I really don't believe that the best option has been realized because um they're not comparing apples to apples. They're comparing apples to what could possibly be an orange. I don't know. But I don't know what it is because there's not enough data there to tell me what it is. So when you talk about a referral, I'd be up for that because at least that way, we're going to get the information and we're going to get our um peer review done, which everybody seemed to be able to peer review all the other documents, but we haven't had an opportunity to truly peer review some of the uh technical data that was provided and has been made public. So I'm just putting that out there, too.
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I'm just speaking of the legal opinions. I wanted to highlight this specifically because I know we keep referencing these two legal opinions, but we really haven't dived into them overly deep. Items 9.12 and 9.13 were added as of 6:20 PM this afternoon. 9.12 is the legal opinion from Loopster Nixon, which this council sought out. 9.13 is a legal opinion from Erd Burles, which again is a legal opinion that this council sought out. We requested this information a week ago. It was a tight turnaround, but both firms provided us with information. I truly urge you to go look at both of them. Council voted to release that information because it is the public's information and you should have it. One, from Loopster Nixon speaks to the fact that there are concerns around whether or not strong mayors, or not concerns, that strong mayor powers cannot be utilized for endorsing a boundary adjustment. 913 from Erd Burles speaks to the fact that strong mayor's powers can be used for a boundary adjustment. This is the situation that we are in, folks, right now. Respectfully, waiting one day, one week, one month is not going to change the fact that when we receive an engineering report, the next day we get three that contradict it. When we get a peer review on that, then that peer review then gets peer reviewed. So when this council sits here and says, we've received probably 100 different reports relating to this, it is accurate. I couldn't even list off all of the different reports that we consistently receive. Again, there is not going to be new information that is going to come from this. This is challenging all around. We understand that. But we also respectfully cannot pick and choose different pieces of every report and opinion opinion to pad our own personal opinion. And that is what has happened consistently at this table as well. So I, I do not see the value in pushing this another two weeks. I think the public are here this evening to hear how Springwater is going to move forward. I, of course, do not want to see us in any legality position that would affect the taxpayer. But at the same time, we know that these type of suits come often. And regardless of the decision that we make, somebody has the right to bring a lawsuit against this municipality. I sure hope they don't. But again, I believe with the information that has been provided to us, we have enough to be able to proceed in whatever direction council so chooses. So I will not be supporting a deferral. I believe tonight is the night. That's what we've advertised and that's what I think the residents expect.
Counselor Fisher.
I think, I think interesting points were made. It, it's always said that, that we weren't rushing this, right? It's, it's been on the table for two years. But yes, it's true. We were receiving legal opinions as of early this afternoon. As a matter of fact, I was reading one in the car as I came over. So, you know, that to me is rushed. And to Counselor Garwood's point, yeah, that we, they are contradictory. That should worry the public that we have contradictory reports coming to us at the last minute. But because they're contradictory, we might as well just rush through the decision, right? Doesn't seem very logical to me. As a matter of fact, I, I would say everything that Mr. Garwood said frankly supports a deferral, you know? Also too, I, I'd like the public to know, when it comes to lawsuits and your municipality, you don't get to know about them, right? So when something is levied against us, you, right? It takes place in closed session. So when those million-dollar lawsuits, I mean, they're, they're high-ticket ones. I mean, there's your slip and falls, but then there's going to be, be large ones that come forward. You won't even know that it's happening, right? So I would venture a guess that in the ensuing years, this will get litigious, right? And you won't even know. So when your tax bill goes up, just sort of wonder, is it going up because of annexation or is it because of the lawsuits? Or maybe a combination of the two. But either way, I think a deferral is, is highly logical.
Counselor, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I think it's not time to kick the can down the road again. We get more opinions, they're just going to be contradictory to each other and cost taxpayers more money. I'll admit, I don't know a lot about water and wastewater. I don't know a lot about the tech, the technical aspects of it, the flows, the quality of the water and wastewater plants. But I've tried to do my homework and tried to do my research. I've met with both the Sadlin Group and the Remington Group and both of the developers and their planning teams. And I mean, they were here last week and said they have done their due diligence. And, and the best path forward for these two important projects, they're not only important to them, they're important to us. One of them is going to create a new high school for our community. They've said that they're very confident with the technical information that Berry's provided them, that they're very confident that that is the best path forward for them. I respect that because it's their, it's their reputation, it's their projects that are on the line. And I guess really time will tell. I mean, we've, I, I looked at, I saw, I looked at Berry's building report, report. They've had over, I believe they'll have this year over a billion dollars of, of development. In our township, we've had 13, 13 new home residential starts in the entire township compared to a billion dollars of development in the city of Berry. They have over a billion dollars of infrastructure already in place. Both Sadlin Group and Remington Group are very confident that Berry can do what they said they're going to do. I don't think any more reports are going to change that. I don't think any more legal opinions are going to change that. I say we, right or wrong, we, I, we've called the vote, I say that we vote and see where this goes.
Thank you. And we do have it moved in second. It is on the floor, but Counselor Moore did ask for a, and I'm going to be, is it a deferral to just deal with it later? Or is there specific information that we're looking for to come back?
Thank you, Mayor Coughlin. I'd like to defer until we review Counselor Fisher's motion on the judicial review. We're asking staff to bring a report back on what that would look like. I have no idea myself. I've never been involved in a judicial review. I think it's highly important that we look at that. I think we're going down that road regardless. So I'd like to at least defer until we get that report back and know what that process looks like. Thank you.
I would need a second. I have Counselor Fisher, comments on the deferral. So, so that's a referral. So we are going to refer for information on a judicial review. I had Counselor Garwood.
Thank you, Mary Coughlin. Should the referral pass, I'd ask that the motion be communicated immediately with the Office of the Provincial Land Facilitator to ensure that they are aware of the situation in Springwater and also to request any feedback or concerns that they may have as we have been given direction. And while some think it's a scare tactic, it's real because it's happened to municipalities over in the past. What happens when you do not follow the direction that has been provided? So again, should council choose to go that way, then that is the will of council and that is fine. But I request that information be shared and any response to be returned back to all members of council.
Deputy Cabral.
Thank you, Mary Coughlin. Can we please include the technical review piece? I mean, it sounds to me like some of the data is still missing and it sounds to me like our, our consultant engineer is, is still wanting that data. I'd like to be able to have him acquire that data. Maybe it can come back at the same time because it seems to me that based on the report, there's still information and data that are required to come to a conclusive conclusion regarding the city of Berry's capabilities for providing water and wastewater. Thank you.
And I'm just going to now turn to CAO Ainsworth.
Thank you, Mary Coughlin. Regarding the peer review piece, speaking with Mr. Mullin, he would require the background information from RV Anderson in able to, in order to be able to peer review that information. We are not certain what information would be provided. So that would have to be a request of the consultants through Hempson and RV Anderson.
Deputy Cabral.
Oh, thank you, Mary Coughlin. My understanding was that Springwater Township was in a position to seek additional information if we wanted additional information as part of the facilitation process.
I'm going to defer to CAO Ainsworth. At this point, I've been told that all the information that we're going to get, we have got. And the province made it very clear when we've asked for extensions, we've asked for other information, it was not available. So CAO Ainsworth.
Thank you, Mary Coughlin. Staff would only be able to make the request. We're unsure of what else would be provided.
Counselor Alexander.
Um, I would also request, and whether it's officially a part of the motion or just a respectful request and to be relayed to the province, that if this referral should go through and we have two weeks for, I, I don't know how long, I would request that this council work collaboratively with the county on a win-win situation during that time to see if there is a more palatable solution that for this, for the township of Springwater and the county of Simcoe as probably our biggest partner. So if something eventually does need to happen, it is a collaborative win-win situation for everyone. So I would just like to add that in there, just to continue to collaboratively work with the county of Simcoe.
I, I think my comments to that would be, while working with the counties, we can continue to that. And the negotiations are, yes, we have partners, but the negotiations are with the city of Berry, which are facilitated by the province. The province has suggested that we have a final framework agreement from the city of Berry. We have communication from the city of Berry that has stated very specific information that the compensation packages could look very different. We also have communication from the province and the premier that said they wanted a local solution and wanted to give us an opportunity to make a local solution. And my concern with us not voting is that we are simply telling the province, this council has the inability to make a decision. That is the message that I feel we are sending to the province. And it is my fear that the province absolutely will look to this as a non-decision and the decision will be made for us. Counselor Alexander.
So respectfully, I, I do disagree. I think that continuing conversations with the county says we're not walking away, we're just not in a place where we're comfortable yet. So we are still working towards a solution. And I think having the county at the table with us is in our best interest. And that is what we should be doing is fighting for Springwater's best interest. So again, differing opinions, that's fine. Regardless, two things are going to happen tonight, or three things are potentially. We're going to vote for a referral. It's going to pass or it's not going to pass. Or we're going to just do the vote. I, from the, I'm pretty sure I'm going to accurately say the vote's going to be no. And then at that point, we've either told the province no, or you are going to use your strong mayor's powers and it will be a yes. So quite honestly, if you're going to use your strong mayor's powers, I prefer you just tell us now and let's move forward.
And again, and thank you for that. And from what I'm hearing from that is, Mayor Coughlin, please do this so we don't have to, so that we don't have to go along this.
Absolutely not.
So don't, don't, don't tell me, excuse me. Counselor Alexander, when I was speaking, you disagreed with me and I allowed you to speak until we can disagree.
That's not what I said.
You said use the strong mayor's powers anyway.
No.
Excuse.
If you are going to use your strong mayor's powers, I would prefer to know now because at that point, this discussion at this table is mute. It's moot, it doesn't matter.
We have a deferral on the floor. It has been spoken to. There are members that have not had an opportunity to speak to it. Again, I think the, that the motion now before council be referred to receive, and just so I'm clear, legal advice on a judicial review and that staff request Hempson technical data for only to further peer review and that the township continues to work collaboratively with the county of Simcoe. Is there a date that we would like to have this back for? Or this, we just going to, like, maybe the public would like to know when our next, when we are actually going to make a decision, when these information needs to come back? Counselor Moore.
Thank you. I would defer to the CAO, please. I'm not quite sure how quickly we can get the judicial review information back. Do you have any idea?
CAO Ainsworth.
Uh, thank you, Mary Coughlin. Regarding the notice of motion later on, on this agenda, requesting a, a legal opinion regarding a potential judicial review, it would not be a staff report. Staff would have to seek legal or council would have to direct which legal firm they wish to seek the legal advice from. And it would depend on that. In speaking with Counselor Fisher regarding the notice of motion, his intent is that legal come in as soon as possible, as early as next week to provide that information to council. That, that is the timeline. Should it, should council be able to pinpoint a legal firm that they wish to seek advice from, it would not be a staff report. We do not have the expertise in-house.
Counselor Moore.
Thank you. Then I'd be happy with just refer till or defer till next meeting, two weeks.
CAO Ainsworth.
Uh, thank you, Mary Coughlin. And the next regularly meeting of council is November 5th. That is three weeks away from today's date. There is also the portion of the referral regarding the peer review for the RV Anderson technical memos. Pending the information could be or would be received from the consultants pending Mr. Mullin's availability and the data that would need to be sorted through, reviewed, that is an additional piece to the timeline that we're just unsure of at this point.
Counselor Garwood.
Uh, thank you. Just a comment on the amendment. I'm, I'm a bit confused as to what further we're doing with the county of Simcoe and why that's included in this direction. Respectfully, I understand, of course, they're a partner of ours, Counselor Alexander, but this is not the time to bring this forward. We've had ample opportunity. We consistently work with them. We have two representatives sitting right here that sit on county council that advocate for us, regardless if they disagree, there's still two of them that sit there and go to those meetings. So at the end of the day, I, I don't know what else we're gathering from the county. Not a question for you. I'm not going to put you on the spot. It's more of a statement, but respectfully, I, I'm, I'm embarrassed with this conversation.
The other cons, the other concern I have is that the, did you, the, there's an assumption made in this amendment that council would be supporting a later. So I guess if we have this, then we don't need to have the notice of motion later on and we're just assuming. Okay, then that's fine. You can take that off. So that, the motion before council, uh, oh, CAO Ainsworth.
Uh, thank you, Mary Coughlin. With that, I would ask that further details included in the notice of motion be provided within this referral, just to ensure that it is very clear direction to staff regarding the legal advice for a judicial review, please.
That has been added in. CAO Ainsworth.
My apologies, Mayor Coughlin. I did mention earlier, council could select the law firm that they wish to seek legal advice from. Staff do not have any recommendations at this point. There are a number of firms that deal with judicial reviews. If staff, if council would like staff to explore and seek availability based on, with that, based on a priority basis, we can do so. However, if council wishes to have a specific legal firm, it would need to be identified within this motion.
Thank you. It would be my preference that we seek legal advice from experts in that, in that field, whoever that is, to the discretion of yourself and the clerk's department. Counselor Fisher.
I was just going to suggest we've worked closely with Loopster Nixon thus far, but so, but there we go.
Okay. And we're just going to ask the members of the audience, please. Thank you.
I think so.
Yes, yes, it is.
So at this time, we have a deferral or sorry, a referral and before, the referral, the motion now before council be referred to engage with Loopster Nixon LLP to provide detailed advice regarding the possibility of initiating a judicial review of the city of Berry boundary adjustment process and report back to council at a special meeting to be held the week of October 20th to 24th. And that's staff request Hemson's technical data for Aynley to further peer review and that the township continues to work collaboratively with the county of Simcoe. I have this moved by Counselor Moore and seconded by Counselor Fisher. Is there anything further on the referral? Deputy Cabral.
Yes, Mayor Coglan. I, I don't know if we're going to talk about further review. When the data wasn't provided, it's difficult for our consultant to review data that was never provided. So it's not further review the data. It's to get the data for review.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. They didn't provide it, so it's kind of difficult to review it.
That staff request Hemson's technical data for Aynley to peer review. Anything further? Counsel, all those in favor of the deferral? And that has carried. At this time, we will take a break and we will come back for action reports. It is now 8:46. We will reconvene at 9:00 PM. Before we do move on to action reports, for those who are sticking around to see whether strong mares will be used this evening, it will not. It is never my intention to use strong mares in a situation that would not allow members of this council to vote. So if that's what you're sticking around for, it's not going to happen. May I move on? Mover and seconder for the action reports, please. Counselor Moore, Counselor Thompson, that action report items 11.2 through 11.7 be received and that recommendations contained therein be approved as presented. 11.2, the 2025 Springwater Swing Tournament Funding Update. 11.3, Group Benefits Program Renewal. 11.4, 2026 Council Meeting Schedule. 11.5, the award of 2025 58 PWS Sidewalk Plow. 11.6, purchase of Used Loader Mounted Snowblower. 11.7, 2056 Wilson Drive Reduction of Securities and Substantial Completion. Counselor, are there any of these to be pulled? Counselor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Can I pull the contribution, please, to the Season Center for Grieving Children? Thank you.
Any other items to be pulled? Any comments or questions on the remaining? Counselor Garwood? Not seeing any. At this time, council will be voting on all with the exception of 11.2. All those in favor? Not seeing any at this time, council. We will be voting on all with the exception of eleven point two. All those in favor? And that has carried. We will now move on to, sorry, may I have a mover and seconder for the update for the Springwater Swing, please? Councillor Moore? Councillor Fisher, that the report from the Executive Assistant Mayor Council of C A O and Deputy C A O titled Twenty Twenty Five Springwater Swing Tournament Fundraising Update Dated October fifteenth, twenty twenty five be received, and that sixty thousand be allocated to the Season Centre of Grieving Children in honour of Nicole Odette, and the remainder of the funds be kept in the Springwater Swing fundraising account. At this time, I will turn to Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just some housekeeping, really. The grieving, or sorry, the Season Centre for Grieving Children does, no longer exists as such. And as you know, I've sat on the board for Hospice Simcoe for many years, and we've merged. So Hospice Simcoe Season Centre is actually what it's called now. And so with that, I think council needs to decide because our donations no longer go to one or the other. They go into a central pool. So I just wanted council to be aware that the sixty, and I would actually, I would increase that to seventy thousand because we are in a surplus situation. So seventy thousand dollars to Hospice Simcoe Season Centre with the understanding that it goes into a central pool for both organisations.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. What I would ask of council is this, this charity was made at the recommendation of Nicole's husband. I would like an opportunity to reach back out to Mr. Odette as it was in Nicole's honour. So I would just like to reconfirm with my John as to where, and report back to council. Deputy Cabral?
Are we still able to move on that other motion of increasing it to seventy thousand?
When it comes back? Yep. So this is a motion to defer. So I've the next regular meeting? So a motion to defer moved by Councillor Moore, seconded by Councillor Fisher. All those in favour? And that has carried. Thank you for that. At this time, we will now move on our information reports. May I have a mover and seconder for the information reports, please? Deputy Cabral and Councillor Garwood, that report items listed herein be received as information. One is the Building Services Monthly Activity Report. Two is the City of Berry Boundary Adjustment and Mapping Investigation. And three is O P twenty twenty five zero zero one and Z B twenty twenty five zero zero five Vesper Hills Development and Legacy Golf Properties. Are there any questions or are any of these to be pulled? Any comments or questions on any of these? Not seeing any? I would definitely like to highlight the Berry Boundary Adjustment Mapping Investigation.
Happy book, if you want.
I just have comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. And they, the bill. Not only, I guess, satisfied with, with the results, I think that, again, the accusations that continue to be made, I just would like to highlight it for the public to take a look at it. Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. One of the reasons why I didn't is because none of the maps were created in Springwater Township, so kind of indicated to me that they came from somewhere else, and if staff aren't able to determine where they came from, then they've done what they can, and that's it.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I'd also like to report as, I think it was Manager Bernie that did the report, would thank him for the report. I do have one comment about his conclusion that there was no financial consequences to the township for, for this report, but I, I see whenever we use staff for these silly little reports and audits, there is a cost to taxpayers and there is a cost to the township. And again, I've asked members of council in the future not to use staff in this way. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. It's a waste of all of our time. And again, it, it's something about nothing, and hopefully we can do better in the future.
Not seeing anything further, council. All those in favour? And that has carried. We will now move on to our verbal reports. Nothing from staff at this time? County updates?
No, I don't have one.
Would you like to speak to the notice of motion that was brought forward at county council?
I could if you'd like, Mayor Coglan.
Or I can?
Well, you can if you like. You go ahead, and if I have any further comments, then I'd be happy to make them.
Yes, thank you. For those that don't follow county council quite as closely as they follow Springwater Township Council, last, last meeting on Monday, before the meeting, there was a notice of motion put on the agenda by Councillor Laduke. That notice of motion was asking me to resign as deputy warden, as there was, in his opinion, a perceived conflict with me as deputy warden and Mayor Coglan in the negotiations. That notice of motion was brought forward by procedural waving to deal with on the day of. And that notice of motion was voted down of thirty-two members in the House. Thirty had confidence in the ability of our deputy warden, and two did not.
One of the reasons why I didn't bring it up, Mayor Coglan, is I didn't want to put you on the spot with that particular motion, but I will indicate in the open, as I did there, that I did support Major Mayor Laduke's motion, and the reason for that was because some of the, the things that had gone on prior to, I actually felt that there was a bit of a conflict between yourself and your position as the deputy warden and being the mayor of Springwater Township while we were going through the boundary discussion. But it was quite obvious from the, the floor there that members didn't feel that same way, and they voted their confidence in you, so I'm happy to accept that.
Thank you. At this time, we have municipal updates. Are there any municipal updates? I will start.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Actually, I'd like to go back to development updates if I could, just, and so through the chair to Director Harvey, is that we, last council meeting, I think it was either last one or two ago, we had a, a, we've had lots of discussion in these chambers even earlier today about water and wastewater and about who can do what when. And we've had a real difficulty on Findlay Mill Road with the force main and meeting timelines and, and people doing what they say they're going to do and what they're capable of doing. You had given us a date of November, November the first. This, this is real for us. It's affecting the library. It's affecting local businesses. Is there any update on them achieving this? I don't see any activity there on achieving this, getting that opened up for November the first.
To you, Mayor Coglan, to Councillor Thompson. So as of today, we got a schedule. We've been looking one from the contractor, and the developer has, we're in the process of reviewing that. We're emphasizing the number first date. I can tell you that their current schedule does not show them being completed November first. So we're going to have a meeting on that tomorrow. At the latest for, now I'll just speak to the microtunneling that's at Findlay Mill and Bayfield Street. That's the impetus and the most important component for us. The other construction activity on Findlay Mill from Wadi Road to Dorn will be finished and complete this week, completely open to two-way traffic. They obviously will come back next year for top asphalt and some surface work. So they're two separate projects. Our biggest concern is getting Bayfield at Findlay Mill open, and we are now going to look at that. The latest in their schedule was November fifteenth, which concurs with the county's requirements on the county road occupancy permit. So again, at the latest is November fifteenth, that I'm being told as of today. But we'll revisit that in a meeting tomorrow to see if we can expedite that and get that section wrote up by the first. Our winter activities are as of November fifteenth, so that's critical for us. So that's the drop dead deadline for us, and we'll reconvene, and I'll give something back to council as an update.
Hold on.
So again, through the chair to Director Harvey, if they don't meet, well, obviously, they haven't met the November first deadline. If they don't meet the next deadline, and we get into winter operations, does that mean it's deferred till the spring?
Director Harvey?
Yes, through you, Mayor Coglan. That's not acceptable to the township and to staff. We would obviously implement other activities and request the developer to bring extra forces in to, to complete the work. The worst scenario is obviously there's the shafts that are sitting there for the microtunneling. And really, you know, we need to give them the opportunity to backfill those and get that reestablished. If we were to act on this, we'd be ended up with a massive hole in the ground. So my best interest is to try and work with them, get additional resources, and at the latest, get this open by November fifteenth.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just to provide an update to council regarding the park naming and park unveiling that I intended on Saturday at the Midhurst Valley Community Park, there was approximately, I don't know, my best guess would be a hundred or so people that attended. The park, I can't tell you that I, or I can say that I've never seen such a beautiful park. The park itself hosts pickleball courts, which is super exciting. Tennis courts, basketball court, there's soccer pitch, there is a beautiful pavilion with picnic tables and trails, park benches. So if you have a chance, please swing by and take a look because it's very impressive. The large granite stone was provided by a local, a local company, and it was engraved Scott Elliott and his wife, or ex-wife, sorry, Laurie was present, family were present, and they unveiled the park naming as the Adam Elliott Park. And just to say to please, they were very thankful for the certificate. They were appreciative of all the kind words and sentiment that council sent. But please swing by and take a look because it's, it's impressive, and this stone is, is huge. And I do plan to post some pictures, but I was waiting for the photographer to send them to me, which I just got today. So stay tuned.
Councillor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just a few items. First, I wanted to, of course, highlight the Elmville Fall Fair that occurred this past weekend. Once again, we were, we were blessed with some pretty great weather two years in a row, which was really nice to see. Roughly between eight and ten thousand visitors chose to come into the Elmville community and attend our annual fair, one of our most successful fairs to date, which was quite exciting. So thank you to everyone that, that continues to support the Elmville Fall Fair. The second piece I wanted to mention and highlight was the opening or the unveiling of the commemorative crosswalk, which occurred actually just before this meeting tonight in Elmville at Mariah Street and Queen Street. This was a project that was initially brought forward by the Elmville B I A, brought to this council and unanimously supported. So I continue to thank council for that. Again, it was our goal to have that installed prior to Remember and Stay this year. So I thank Director Harvey, Manager Everhart, and, and staff for getting that done. Last evening, Councillor Thompson and I had an opportunity to attend an event in Elmville at the Elmville Community Hall. It was given by Dr. Bill Shoddick, which this council will know Dr. Shoddick well. Dr. Shoddick is the president and C E O of the Elmville Water Foundation, and his presentation was titled Celebrate Nature. And it was an opportunity for many in the community to come out, see the amazing work that Dr. Shoddick and his team are doing at the Elmville Foundation, Elmville Water Foundation. I know this council and this township has been a consistent supporter of that project and that initiative, so it was really nice to see. And I did encourage Dr. Shoddick to, to come to council and also provide a slimmed-down version of that information because I know it was eye-opening for Councillor Thompson and I. Just a couple other items, housekeeping items I wanted to note. Next week is Ontario Small Business Week. Of course, that's important to all businesses in our community, but the Elmville B I A will be again focusing and highlighting some of our local incredible businesses. And on November the first, which is just a few weeks away, I don't believe we have a council meeting prior to that. That is our first home game for the Elmville Harvesters, which is pretty exciting. Councillor Thompson, it's harvesters, not foresters, so just remember that. But again, we are, we are excited about that. And I know there'll be many of us there cheering them on. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, a couple of weeks back, I brought forward the elect respect motion. It was something that I believed was important. Last week, I had the opportunity, I was invited to call into CBC Ontario Morning Radio and to speak about the importance of this motion and how municipalities across the province are looking to make a change. They're looking to, again, hold each other to that high standard. So I had an opportunity to, to speak to the team there. So if you haven't listened to it, check it out. And again, to council as a reminder, a great opportunity to sign that pledge.
Councillor Alexander?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I just want to quickly speak to the S S C A had an event on October ninth, which I had the opportunity to attend while working with the township to improve habitat for pollinators as part of the Bee Parks Project. I had the ability with quite a number of residents who came out, which was great to see, to plant different types of plants that, you know, bring in the pollinate, the bees to pollinate and keep the park natural and all of that. It was, it was, it was a busy day. I had a lot going on, and I got there, and it was amazing just to grab a shovel, relax, and dig up dirt and do something great for the environment. So just wanted, again, highlight some of the great work that the S S C A is doing in our township and specifically around Orr Lake.
Thank you. Not seeing any more updates. Notices of motion, I will turn to, so this is the notice of motion regarding the exemption for fill site alteration. Moved by Councillor Fisher, a seconder for this. Councillor Alexander, and I will turn to Councillor Fisher.
Read it out. The council hereby grants an exception on, excuse me, to the property owner of twenty sixteen Old Second Road North from the requirement to obtain a fill permit as set out in Fill in Site Alteration Bylaw twenty twenty two dash one oh five, related to fill brought onto the property overnight on July eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Just a brief overview, it's an agricultural property. Some fill asphalt millings actually were brought on to the, the farmyard to be spread. Very, very small amount. I think that, that in this case, an exception could be granted, particularly for, for an agricultural business within our community. So I'd look for your support on that.
Comments or questions? Councillor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I'm not quite sure who to direct this to, maybe Director Harvey. Through you to Director Harvey, can you outline the cost associated with a fill permit? And, and is this a usual process that this type of an exemption would come to council for an exception?
Through you, Mayor Coglan, to Councillor Garwood. So our Fees and Services Bylaw outlines the costs related to this, and it's based on the quantity of fill that's brought forward. From estimations in this case, for a small permit under a thousand cubic meters, you're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars plus eighty cents per cubic meter. That's what's outlined in the Fees and Schedule Bylaw. To your second point about whether this is a customary practice, in my twenty-five years of experience in regulating fills, I've not had that request come forward before.
C E O Ainsworth?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. The, the bylaw in question, there are no provisions in there for staff to provide any exemptions, meaning any exemption requests would come through council and have to be decided by council. So the bylaw does not provide staff the ability to provide any exemptions. That's why you are seeing it for you today.
Deputy Cabral?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. I, I am somewhat familiar with, 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 with this particular thing, and I would actually ask Councillor Fisher, who's the representative on the Agricultural Committee, that this seems to be something that, you know, some of the farmers are now facing because they are putting material in one location in order to, say, resurface their driveways. You know, at different locations, like some of our farmers do not have one contingent piece of land. They are traveling up onto the second, over to the tenth, property down on Vigo Road. They rent properties too. And a lot of these locations do have buildings and whatnot where if they can get some type of material to put down, be it gravel or whatever, and they bring it to one location, I don't believe it's their intent all the time to fill in anywhere. It's quite often to move to another location and spread it, but they get enough for all of the locations. So I'm wondering if it might be an opportunity here, since this has come up, that Councillor Fisher might be able to bring this back to the Agricultural Committee and see what kind of recommendation they might make that might make this a little bit easier for our farmers so that, you know, So that, uh, you know, um, they're not put in the same position as maybe a actual cut and fill situations where people are taking fill or bringing in and actually filling in stuff as opposed to something that's going to be utilized for, uh, resurfacing of a driveway, that kind of thing, like regular maintenance, in my opinion.
Um, I'm Counselor Fisher. I'm Counselor Thompson and I do see Director Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Coglan.
Counselor, I think you just responded.
Oh, I just wanted to say, yes, I, I, I could certainly bring this back. We've had some discussions on the agricultural committee already that pertain to this. I'd like to pass this one tonight and then actually sit down with the agricultural committee and see what sort of, uh, what sort of plan we could have going forward with it. But it's certainly, uh, certainly maintenance of farmyards. I, I wouldn't call it, uh, you know, large amounts of fill coming in to fill in certain areas. It really is maintenance of those farmyards.
Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. So through the chair to Counselor Fisher, I went out to take a look at this. It looks like a large amount to me. It doesn't look like a small amount. Secondly, is this a hardship case? Cause this cannot, this farmer not afford $150?
Um, I don't, I don't think, I think that maybe the next, the next question might be more appropriate. I, I do think that if it's generically as to maybe rephrasing it as to what is the purpose and effect of an exemption? Counselor, I would make that suggestion.
That's your question. Uh, I, I can't speak to, uh, to somebody's financial, uh, I can't answer that question, to be honest with you. But what I will say, yes, it was, it, it looked like a significant amount. It was brought to one farm. As you may or may not know, typically in, in large agri business these days, there are multiple plots of land, multiple farms, right? So that is intended to go to, uh, to a few different farms and be, and be spread. But it, it was really just a, I'd say cost effective way to put it in one location and then have it distributed. So.
Thompson?
Thank you. Follow on. So through the chair, Director Harvey. So how did we find out about this? Did the farmer come to us and say, hey, I've got this material? Can I get an exemption? How, what was the process of how we found out about this fill being dumped?
Director Harvey?
Through you, Mayor Coglan. Um, we received a complaint, um, from the public as it relates to that. And so an investigation involved. So it was something that was complaint driven.
Counselor Thompson?
Okay. So through, through the chair, just a comment. I don't think a couple of hundred dollars would, would be a problem. I, I see no problem in not waiving the fees and not waiving the application. If I was a neighbor and I had a complaint and saw this fill dumped, uh, I'm sure they're not on municipal water out there. I'm sure it's all well water. And it's great to say that it's asphalt filings. I didn't even know what that is, but it's, uh, I, I, as a neighbor, I would like to see our staff out and inspect it. I don't think we have inspected it. So we really don't know what the materials is. A lot of it you can't see because it's all in behind the barn. So, uh, I think that they should follow the bylaw and pay the fee. And I think at least our staff should be out and inspect, um, this fill just to make sure that it, it is okay. And, uh, so that the neighbor who did make the complaint, um, is satisfied.
Um, so from the way that I read the, the notice of motion, it's, it's not just speaking to the fee. So by providing this exemption, what else would council be not just the $150? Like what, what would go typically, what would typically be involved with a cut and fill permit? Because anytime I've experienced it, it's testing and a lot of things my husband doesn't like to participate in, but does.
Through you, Mayor Coglan. That was the reason I wanted to interject here because it's not just related to the township bylaw. There are strict regulations, Ontario Regulation 40619 talks about that. So the provincial legislation that would not be exempt should the bylaw is one thing the township has. There's Ontario regulations related to the movement of soil and fill, quality things that you're speaking to, testing. There should be a site plan. Qualified persons should say that this, uh, material is of a certain table that the ministry environment would, would comment on. And all of that information and background would be done. There hasn't been any investigation. We have conversations with the landowner that it is recycled asphalt product, perhaps. But the consistency of that, what's in there, um, is, is unknown. That should be known. This could be precedent setting. I would be cautionary on that. But this background information, whether it be required by the township, will also be retired by the province. So, um, we should be cognizant of that.
Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. I, I have no problem waiving the, the $150 fee. My, my concern is, is exactly what Director Harvey just noted regarding the, the permit itself. So again, without asking too much information, because I understand that's not the time and the place. If it's fee focused, that's one thing. But if it's the need to not get a permit, that's a completely separate conversation in my perspective. So again, I'd be fully supportive of this, going back to the agricultural advisory committee for any recommendation or, or advice. But are we putting ourselves in a challenging situation if we're not requiring our permit for one, but we require it for the other 101? I, I just, I don't know enough about the fill permit process. And again, if we do it for one agricultural property, I, I almost feel like we need to do it for every other one. And, and again, I'm happy to open that conversation up, but I just don't know if this is the time for that.
Deputy Cabral?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. And, um, I, I did look into the regulations with respect to what's considered hazardous material and what is not. And, um, uh, that didn't fall in there. And when I looked at the cut and fill, um, bylaw itself, it speaks to soils. But, um, um, there are many municipalities, including Simcoe County, that actually put asphalt grindings. They use it for shouldering material. Uh, they take it off of their own roads and reuse it. And I don't know whether or not the initial complaint was specific to something being left at the location or whether it was another type of complaint that, um, brought by law there and then the material was located. But I do feel that, um, farmers, uh, when they do have this type of, of operation where they're putting in gravel or asphalt grindings. Um, and that's why I'm suggesting that it go to the agricultural committee to see whether or not there might be some kind of a compromise because, uh, they're businessmen who do a lot of travel in between their different locations. And, um, for example, let's say that it was gravel, uh, that came from one of the aggregate pits. And, um, you know, they were going to spread it on their other farms, but it was more convenient for them to have it in one spot for a, a, a short period of time while they kind of worked around all their other work in order to spread it at the various locations for driveway resurfacing. That's how I was viewing this. And that's why I kind of think it might be appropriate for the ag committee to become involved in this and see what their feelings are and how we might be able to mitigate, you know, issues going forwards where they're going to use the material to resurface their driveways and parking lots, mitigate holes and things like that, and maybe, uh, uh, assist with, uh, with, um, water collecting on, on there. And see whether or not there's a way for the, our farming community to benefit from that rather than be put in a position where, you know, they're going to have to go through a bunch of hoops and maybe some costly hoops. Maybe there's a way that they can advise staff what they have, what's going on and, uh, have a, have a path through there uh, for them to be able to, um, basically throw a bit of gravel or whatever the material is on their driveways, a resurfacing agent. And that's, you know, what was going to be done here. So just leave it at that.
Um, before I do go back down to the other side of the table. So by placing an exemption for a site alteration, uh, that would, is that carte blanche? Does that mean that this property would be able to bring on as much fill as they want? Or it would just be for the, what's, what's already there? Clerk Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, the motion states the, related to the fill brought onto the property on July 18th. So it would be specific to that fill that was brought on. It would not, um, it would not be for any future, um, future fill or whatnot. That would still be, uh, requirements of the bylaw.
Counselor Fisher?
Quick comment. Uh, just going back to a question that was raised. I believe the initial, uh, complaint was actually a noise complaint from the dump trucks coming in. So that, uh, that's why the initial call was made. But, uh, back to the deputy mayor's point, you know, this, this is used extensively. We use it on our roads. There's runoff that runs through it. Um, we drive on it. We'll drive on it on our way home tonight. So I, I really would like to have an exemption, this one time exemption here tonight on this. But I do agree, it should come back before the agricultural committee. So we can best look at situations like this. As I said, large agri business these days is not a hundred acre farm where it's one farmyard. It's actually quite prevalent, uh, where they own large farmyards, lots of equipment moving. So I, uh, like I said, I'd like to press forward with this tonight, but I also would like to endeavor a solution through the, uh, the ag committee.
Counselor Thompson?
So, uh, through, through the chair, is there any way that staff could at least inspect this stuff to verify what it is? Because again, you can't see it from the road. Director Har-
Director Harvey?
Through you, Mayor Coglan. I would suggest that that process is usually done by a qualified person. There'd be a sampling regime. There's very strict requirements for that. That's not something staff could do. Staff would just observe. But really part of the process in Ontario Reg 406 is related to all that. And what, what really is that substance there? And, uh, qualified person using a geotechnical will, will outline a good location for this. So, um, that is the process that should be followed. And that's the quality standards that are outlined in that regulation. So I think, uh, I would suggest that the individual follow those, uh, regulations. Because that goes above and beyond a provincial regulation over a bylaw home responsibility.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Just a, just an observation. One question, have we had any other complaints? Has this, is this a one-off or have, is this sort of a theme that we're seeing? And I'll, I'll tell you why in two secs.
Clerk Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. We wouldn't be able to comment, uh, regarding bylaw complaints on a specific property. This some information is being released based on the notice of motion. It, we have to adhere to the privacy of, of the property owner. So to speak of any other kinds of, uh, bylaw complaints aside from this specific instance, we wouldn't be able to comment on that.
Follow on, Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Thank you. The reason I ask is because, um, starting in the spring, down, as, down in Eba round where I am, many of these recycled asphalt providers have been going door to door. And they've been advertising, um, good deals for so many truckloads. I don't know how they measure all of that. And there's a number of people that have taken advantage of this. And I suspect that this gentleman, I don't know, I'm only surmising possibly was, uh, on that list. And maybe somebody knocked on his door and, and he thought that would be, um, would be appropriate. I think, and because I do know several people that took advantage of it, not necessarily farmers. I, I think maybe this is something that we should be taking a closer look at. I don't know about exemptions and I'm, I'm happy to support this as a, as a one-off if that's the case. But I think it does take a, I, I think we do need to look at it closer and, and make a policy or a sort of permanent bylaw, if that's what it is, about the use or not use or like, uh, Deputy Mayor Cabral said, if that cut and fill is related to soils, as it were not related to recycled asphalt, then, um, it does require a deeper dive. My comment.
But before I go to Counselor Thompson, I, I feel like I'm missing a piece to the puzzle here. Anytime there's been an exemption request that's come forward, it's because it's, they're not able to come into compliance. We had the sign bylaws, the chicken bylaws, the, all the different bylaws. But it was always, the exemption was always provided because they weren't able to, to come into compliance. So is there, like, to me, it's sounding like this individual would need to pay the fee and have it inspected. And from what I'm understanding, then if there's some sort of site alteration, is it because where it is, it can't be? And if that's the reason, is it because it's on a groundwater water? I, I just don't understand why this exemption is before us. If it's simply come pay the permit, have it tested. This doesn't seem like an overly large hoop to run through. So I'm just curious if I, if there's information that I'm missing.
Through you, Mayor Coglan. I think that's the crux of the situation. Staff are unaware what the use is of this. Be honest with you, there's not been any, um, an application come forward to us. To the deputy mayor's comment about, uh, staff would totally work with a resident, um, as it relates to a proper use of this, consulting a qualified person. I mean, there is, we are to reuse and recycle these sorts of products and we do do it all. But at this point in time, that's not where it's sitting. It's sitting in a pile on an agricultural property and that, um, from the province and from the regulations would be not allowed. So provincial regulation, we would need to know what the application is and what the consistency of that material is. There should be, you know, trucking information, uh, quantities should be brought forward. There should be chemical testing. Doesn't matter what it is, whether it's recycled asphalt or fill to the point that some of the counselors are talking about. All these are requirements that are go above and beyond our bylaw. These are provincial regulations. So I would caution on, on movement, uh, on, uh, provincial regulations.
And Counselor Thompson, Counselor Garwood?
Uh, through the chair to Director Harvey. So two questions. One, um, Counselor Fisher said it was a noise bylaw. I'm not sure if that was correct or not, but I mean, yeah. So for it to be a noise bylaw, it would have to be after 11 o'clock at night. We've had a lot of talk here about in our own backyards, would we want this in our own backyards? If I've got somebody coming in with 50 truckloads after 11 o'clock at night and waking me up and I went out to this farm, there's a lot of homes that are at close proximity to this. It would have been a pretty miserable evening for them. So, um, I don't, I, I don't think I can support this. Secondly, um, the hauler, like the, I, I would think that they would know that they couldn't do that after hours as well. I guess that's a question for Director Harvey. The people that, not only the people that received it, but the people that actually delivered it would have known that they were doing something wrong and incorrect. Can you comment on that?
I would refer probably to the CAO as relates to the bylaw and that sort of enforcement piece. Obviously we have bylaws related to noise restrictions and I, um, I'm assuming that's what the, the issue would have been if there was a, a call at that time. So again, I can't speak to the bylaw and, and the enforcement piece. But, uh, I do know public work staff, uh, went and attended the site with bylaw. And that's what's before you now is that there was a request, um, to, for information. Again, if we had the information, if we knew where it was going to be placed, we could look at, uh, you know, a proper location. So there is restrictions as it relates to wells and, and surface water for this sorts of material. Again, if we would have had the information, maybe we could have helped the resident to fulfill the obligations under the bylaw.
Counselor Garwood?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. From what I'm hearing here, and again, I, I'm also sitting here confused. There's a lot of unanswered questions on this one. Again, I have no problem with the fee. I, I think it would be great for, to go back to the agricultural advisory committee for further review. That's what they're there for and we, we should be utilizing these, these, these good people. But again, I have concern, is it even our jurisdiction? If there's provincial regulations required for testing, are we allowed to even provide a exemption to the permit, which from what I understand would then lead to the testing? So then, again, it's not just about the fee. And then also, why is it, it's July 18th? So we're talking something from a couple of months ago. Again, I'm just, I have so many questions and we're, we're spending a bit of time on this. I feel like we need more information, not just on this one specific matter. I know it's $150. I'm just talking about why it's in front of us in the first place.
CEO Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, should council support this motion? It would only exempt the township's permitting process through the cut and fill bylaw. Provincial legislation trumps and would still stand. The township is not the one that enforces provincial legislation. That is up to landowners, uh, and the province to enforce should they so wish to. But up to landowners to adhere to, uh, haulage companies, uh, different, um, businesses within that, that realm that, uh, should be aware of the legislation and be the ones adhering to it. But the township could not exempt them from provincial requirements.
Follow on?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. And thank you, CEO Ainsworth. Uh, I appreciate that. I, I'm going to then provide a proposed amendment to, again, push this back to the agricultural advisory committee. If it comes down to the cost perspective, again, I'm happy to waive the 150. But before, I think we should be waiving any permit. I think we need to, to have some more information from the folks that know best. So I'm, I'm not comfortable supporting it the way that it is.
CEO Ainsworth?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Coglan. Uh, so while the items are related, uh, should council not be in a position to, um, be able to make a decision tonight? I would recommend, uh, clear direction for the agricultural advisory committee on what I would recommend clear direction for the Agricultural Advisory Committee on what they are being requested to advise on specifically. That could be in the form of an amendment. Should council know exactly what they would like to see advised on? Another option would be to defer this motion, should they wish to, in order for a scoped out motion to come forward to council at the next meeting to advise exactly what council is looking for from the Agricultural Advisory Committee. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. What's before me this evening, I would not be able to support. I look back to understanding the amount of fill and the reason that people are knocking on doors is because there's, there's nowhere for it to go. And by providing this exemption, I, I do not want Springwater to become a dumping ground. I don't know if the Edenvale Airport is now full or why they're all of a sudden needing. But I think that this is a, we've seen the impact to communities. We've seen these trucks and what Clearview has experienced. I think that, to me, there is a path forward and that, like I said before, exemptions are in place for when compliance is not. There's, there's nothing in here about attempting to come into compliance, applying for a permit, not being able to meet compliance. So to me, I would have a difficult time saying no to the next person if I say yes to this. So I think that without information as to why we need to provide an exemption, I won't be able to support the motion. Deputy Cabral?
And Mayor Coglan, just with respect to, through you to Counselor Fisher, I don't have a problem waiving the fee. And I don't have necessarily a problem with the motion itself, but that's why I suggested that the Agricultural Committee become involved in this. So I would recommend that, you know, if we're going to vote on it and some members of council don't want to support it. I mean, that's that member's choice. I mean, that's why we sit up here. But I'd like to see something be done. Either we're waiving the $150 and then send this to the Agricultural Committee with additional information from, maybe the individual can provide it to Counselor Fisher and have the ag committee come back with some form of a recommendation, one way or the other, on how they feel about this. Because I think it really does relate to the agricultural community and the large tracts of land that they farm. And they got a lot of buildings out there and a lot of driveways. So maybe there might be a mechanism by which information prudent to our township could be provided to the Public Works Department through a different mechanism that could satisfy them as to where it comes from, what it's going to be used for, where it's going to be spread, that kind of thing. And have an opportunity for the ag committee to weigh in on that. So that would be my suggestion to Counselor Fisher, if he'd like to rephrase his motion.
Thank you. Certainly, the ag committee could weigh in on it and give our opinion. But I think, given some of the things that Director Harvey said, I don't know that we could really change anything provincially or, you know. But certainly, if that's what council would like to see, you know, personally, what I would like to see tonight is this one time go through with this exemption, but go back to the Agricultural Committee, discuss exactly what they would like to see. Again, this is not a driveway. This is typically working farmyards and businesses. You know, I would like to see that happen tonight.
Any further comments or questions? Counselor Moore?
Just a, just a quick comment. If I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, so bylaw was called on a noise complaint and they went there to investigate the noise complaint, but then incidentally found this? Or how, how did this get found? Sorry to put you on the spot. If you know, you know, but if you don't, that's.
CEO Ainsworth?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Again, I wouldn't feel comfortable providing details regarding a bylaw complaint, just because it's a very specific property that's identified. It was a complaint that initiated this, this process. That's about as much detail as would be appropriate to provide in a public forum.
Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Through you to the deputy mayor, just so I can, I'm just trying to understand, to confirm you are tabling an amendment. Is that, is that correct? And then secondary to that, again, are we then under the impression that the permits, the paperwork is still required for this matter, but we're waiving the fee and kicking it to the ag committee? Do I have that correct or like some clarification on that?
Actually, I was suggesting to Counselor Fisher that he might like to rephrase his motion. But no, I think the motion as it sits is fine by me. But I think that it needs to go to the ag committee so that they can look at this from a farming perspective. I don't know how many farmers are utilizing this material on their driveways. But if it's coming from a roadway that's being pulverized and repaved, there might be opportunity if we know, A, where it's coming from and where it's being stored and where it's going to be spread. That might satisfy our Public Works Department. And we might be able to have a different path for the farming community to follow. I can't necessarily speak for them, Counselor Garwood. But I can certainly see the need for, for them because they're not just going to go buy a pickup truck load of gravel or, you know, two or three pickup trucks load of gravel to top up their driveway in town. You know, they may use 10 or 15 tandem loads to do all of the different driveways they might have at several different properties. So that's why I think it's important that it go back to the ag committee for their input and, and maybe their recommendations. Doesn't mean that council has to adopt them, but it certainly would be good to hear back from our agricultural community. They're the ones that tend to be using this stuff. And I would suggest that one of the reasons why it may have come late in the evening is because that kind of tends to be the time they dig some of this stuff up, depending on where it comes from, when they're taking it off. So anyway, that's what I was suggesting to Counselor Fisher is to, I'm happy to support it the way it is, but I still would like to see it go to the ag committee for further commentary from them.
CEO Ainsworth?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. If the motion stands as is and council votes on it, what I would recommend is Counselor Fisher working with staff to scope out the exact requests of the Agricultural Advisory Committee that can come back to council on November 5th. That way, council knows exactly what is being requested. The committee knows exactly what's being requested of them. And it separates the two matters versus, an exemption versus a larger project so that they're not wrapped into one. So that's what I would recommend if council wants to vote on the motion as is and still pursue the other piece to it.
Thank you. If it's, if it's at all possible, the motion as it is, if we could just have a separate motion for the, the information for the Agricultural Committee, because I, I would like to have that. I won't support an exemption prior to having that. So if we can have the exemption separate and then whether it's a notice of motion to request that separately, just so that, thank you. And for clarification again, so that council hereby grants an accept, an exemption to the property owner? This is not just this, the fee, this is the entire, the testing, everything. Old Second Road North, from the requirement to obtain a fill permit as set out in the Fill and Site Alteration Bylaw 2022-105, related to fill brought onto the property overnight on July 18th, 2025. Anything further on that?
Yeah, Counselor Alexander?
Sorry, just point out a clarification. So understanding that the permit piece is in there, my understanding is the testing is provincial. It has nothing to do with the permit. Is that a correct assumption, Director Harvey?
Yeah, for clarification, yes, through you, Mayor Coglan. Obviously, you can exempt as it relates to the bylaw and the township. However, you can't exempt them out of the regulations and some of the regulations are required. And some of that testing and all those are required, tracking of the material. There's a number of them in the Ontario regs and yes, we could not exempt them out of those requirements.
Thank you. And before you turn off your mic, what, what requirements are we exempting them from at the township level? Is it just a fee or is there actual, like you spoke to a site plan? If you could say everything else that we're exempting?
Yeah, for clarification, so our bylaw obviously works in conjunction with Ontario regulations, right? So the bylaw itself would speak to the fee and then just so council knows there was an 80 cent per cubic meter. So there'd have to be an estimation of the quantity. Normally, we would get that information. So you're exempting really from those requirements of the bylaw. So the permitting process is the way I would see it, okay? Everything else is complementary to the Ontario regs. We're trying to work with, in conjunction with those. So all of those requirements of that Ontario Regulation 406 would need to be followed.
So why doesn't it just say the fee then? Like I, I feel, I'm sorry. To me, it feels like there's more to this than what it is. Like that, that to me is, you know, these, these are all over the place. They happen all the time. And it's not, so what if, if the fills in the wrong spot, who orders them to move it or if it has to be removed? Like to me, this is just, this is bigger than, why doesn't it say exempt the $150 fee? Because when you save eight cents per cubic meter and I don't know if I would call the township if it was just one dump truck and I didn't drive out to see what it was. So again, I don't know what I'm exempting and it's.
So Mayor Coglan, for clarification, so there are some augmented things you look in our permitting process. We do require, you know, some of the information that the Ontario regs. So we're duplicating some of that to work in conjunction with it. But there are strict requirements related to a site plan, testing, tracking, registration of the material. There would be a qualified person who needs to say that this is a good application. Again, if it's rap on a driveway, that's probably a very applicable application. But you don't really know at this point, right, without that information? So the bylaw process does require some of this information. So you're correct, it's more than just the permit. However, I just want to caution that some of that information is also required in the Ontario reg.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions on the exemption? Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that has carried. And at this time, the second notice of motion would be pulled as it formed part of directions already there. And I do believe we now have a notice of motion that would be coming forward to our next agenda specifically to, sorry, I would like Counselor Fisher speak to his notice of motion with the Agricultural Society.
I thought you wanted to have a second piece for us to vote on, sending it to the committee, Agricultural Committee?
So that's exactly what I'm doing right now?
I thought you were looking at the other piece here.
No, notice of motion. So Counselor Fisher?
Yeah, perfect. So essentially that, that, that the Agricultural Committee be, be spoken to or at least give their opinion on it in terms of what this would look like for agricultural businesses and properties going forward.
Counsel, are there any additional notices of motion? Counselor Garwood?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. Can, could we just waive procedure and pass the motion right now? It seems pretty straightforward.
I think what the Clerk Ainsworth was asking for is that we would have an opportunity between now and then to go through detail what we would be actually requiring of them, what they would be able to do so that we don't just say, give actual direction. So I think that's what was being requested. Any additional notices of motion? Seeing any, may I have a mover and secondary to approve the bylaws, please? Counselors Fisher and Moore, Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coglan. So just in reference to 16.2, that bylaw's been removed. Has it scribbled? Perfect. Thank you. Just on the record.
Thank you. I'm a mover and secondary, head Counselor Fisher and Moore, that bylaw listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. And it's 2025087, Establishment of the Public Highway Hereon Creek. All the question, oh, all those in favor? And that has carried confirmation bylaw. Deputy Cabral and Counselor Alexander, that bylaw 2025-088, to confirm and adopt the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on October 15th, 2025, listed here and be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. All those in favor? That is carried and the motion to adjourn. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Moore, that the regular meeting of the Township of Springwater does now adjourn at 10:00 PM to meet again in the regular meeting of November 5th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. All those in favor and that has carried. Thank you.